I annoy enough people with small people.
Aren't you working? And I'm working here. I'm working now.
So then I talk to him. I talk to him at the hospital. And then I talk to him at the hospital. And then he says, "Oh, he's not." No, but he's... I have one more here. Okay.
...heard on any item at the end of the evening. Okay, so we got the approval of the minutes. We have the January 21st, 2014 minutes. Councilmember Levison.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make one correction to the minutes. Under the council retreat options discussion, page 10 of the minutes, page 12 of the paper packet, it indicates that we were going to do... The recollection I and staff both have was that we're doing the Friday, the 21st. The date listed in the minutes is March 22nd. So I would move that we make that correction to March 21st. And staff has confirmed that it is the Friday.
Okay.
Which is the 21st. So with that correction, I move the minutes of January 21st, 2014. Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. On page 12, under where we were voting for advisory boards, for library advisory board, it has Rockwell and Levison voting for David Rockwell. And I don't think he can vote for himself. So I would move that we correct that.
Okay. Okay, so we've got a motion and a two corrections. Anybody want to second the motion? Okay, let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero. Now we have the January 28th, 2014 minutes. Councilmember Levison.
Thank you, Mayor. I move the January 28th, 2014 minutes to be approved as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been... Motion's been made and seconded. Let's vote. Passed at seven to zero. Valerie, are there any agenda revisions or submissions of documents?
No, Mayor, there are none.
Is there a report from the city manager?
Yes, Mayor, council. As you know, we've been talking about holding public meetings in the neighborhoods that were impacted by the floodwaters. And what we wanted to let you know is that in working with those associations and group leaders, they have started setting those meetings. The first meeting will be Tuesday, February 18th, and that's a meeting with the Greens neighborhood. And that'll be at Twin Peaks Golf Course, 6:30 to 8:30. The second meeting will be February 19th, and that's with Champion Greens, and that will be at the Public Works Facility on Airport Road. And then Wednesday, February 26th, they'll meet with the Valley Neighborhood at Westview Middle School, again, 6:30 to 8:30. They're still working to confirm a time to meet with Golden Ponds, and then also Southmore Park. They're working on those issues. One of the things that we did want to point out is that the agenda for next Tuesday, February 18th, actually has one item on it, which is an update on transportation issues and an executive session to go over security procedures. Those issues are not time-sensitive, and so if the council would like to push those agenda items to another meeting, then we could cancel the meeting for that Tuesday night, and council could attend the first meeting with the neighborhoods where we go over essentially the overview that Dale presented, and staff answers more specific questions that we are getting from the neighborhoods, that we've been getting from them over the last couple of weeks. And so definitely wanted to give council that option. We obviously tried not to schedule meetings on Tuesdays, but we have been working with the neighborhoods to see what time works best for them. That's what we're seeing the neighborhoods indicated. So council desires, we can push the two agenda items set for next week, and council can go to that public meeting.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd be willing to counsel that meeting. So I move that we cancel next week's meeting.
Second. All right.
Couldn't push the button.
Let's vote. Okay, seven to zero. It's a done deal. Any other?
That's all I had to do.
Okay, so first call, public invited to be heard is Ava Hartman. Please come down and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Ava Hartman. Hi, my name's Ava Hartman, and I live at 8637 Portico Lane.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm here to talk to you about a program called Mayors for Peace and encourage you to join. I talked to Mayor Coombs two weeks ago, and now I wanted to present the program to you all. This past summer, I had the honor of traveling to Japan and meeting with the mayor of Hiroshima, and he introduced me to the program, which aims for the abolition of nuclear weapons by 2020, but also has less lofty goals like encouraging anti-human rights abuses. They promote human rights and anti-poverty and those kind of things that promote peace in other regards. I think Longmont should join Mayors for Peace because first and foremost, a nuclear threat anywhere is a threat to everyone around the world. And also, it increases Longmont's global awareness and also the globe's awareness of Longmont. We have a sister city in Chino, Japan, so we already have ties, and I think this promotes our relationship with them. And then peace also starts at a local level. And programs like Mayors for Peace promote peace not only on a global scale, but also from people-to-people connections. And this helps us establish peace in our own lives and globally. As of now, 5,860 cities belong to Mayors for Peace, and I firmly believe that Longmont should be the next one. And thank you for your time, and if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ava.
Thank you.
Bob Norris.
Mayor, council members, I'm Bob Norris. I live at 532 Ryder Ridge Drive. You should have it memorized by now. Anyway, I'm here to want to mention two things. One, I want to thank you for your support of the wage legislation. Lots of people don't get all their pay, and that hurts them. They may lose their ability to pay off their car, to pay their rent. If they're not getting the money, they're not spending that in local businesses, and you're not collecting sales tax. And some of the rest of us are spending too much time trying to chase after people doing things they shouldn't. The second thing is, it will surprise you, I'm sure, that I'm here to remind you of the El Comete Dinner, annual dinner. You know, every year that we've had that, there's been more city council people there than school boards. But I think this year is a problem. I understand that you guys forgot to talk to the League of Cities and tell them to change their date. So I'll make you an offer. That is, if your spouse or sister or brother or son goes, we will count them as a city council member. So anyway, it is March 8th. It's First Lutheran Church down the street here, from 5:30 to 8 o'clock. The speakers are Representative Jonathan Singer and the Mexican consulate, and we will also have one of the flood victims that we helped and one of the adult education students. So thank you, and again, thank you for your support on a very important issue.
Thank you, Bob. Brian Hanson.
Brian Hanson, 401 Mountain View Avenue. Mayor, council members, it's good to see you again. Hopefully, I'll get past my first slide. This is actually a little bit of a continuation of my discussion about campaign finance only because this is Mountain View Welding, my next-door neighbor that's owned partly by Wendell Pickett, which I talked a little bit about, some of the campaign contributions. And so I just wanted to show you some of the slides of what goes on in our neighborhood. You'll notice, this is actually today, so not all of these are old slides. Some of them are older, to be sure. This is a forklift going across the sidewalk. You can see the snow wasn't cleared off the sidewalk either. This was this afternoon, unloading some steel off the back of a semi-trailer. And these semi-trailers block the road quite a bit, and kids used to walk on this sidewalk quite a bit. It's clearly become fairly hazardous, so there's a lot less of that now. This is a semi-truck parked in our neighborhood there, doing some work on moving some metal around on the trailer. This right here is unloading a trailer or loading it right there in the middle of our street there. You can see it's kind of inconvenient for that blue car there. This happens a lot. You know, I'm just showing you, this right here is a picture of a semi full of steel I-beams parked in the bike lane. This is right in front of our house there, and that was parked there for quite a while. This is a forklift driving down the street with some steel. It goes all the way across the street, so obviously you can't have two-way traffic. And they don't get any working wideway permits or anything like that that really are wide load. In fact, I've never even seen a license plate on this forklift that goes up and down the street all day. This right here, if you look real carefully, this is a forklift unloading a load across the sidewalk. You see the brown fencing on one side and the truck on the other. It would be pretty hard for that forklift driver to see if there's some kids walking underneath of that steel, and that steel could fall on some kids. So you can see that's a pretty hazardous circumstance right there. Of course, this is that fence again. You know, there's a lot of sparks and stuff that go flying through the fence, and sometimes they do welding close to the fence. I haven't seen that too recently, but I've never actually seen them using the approved welding shields or anything like that. Of course, this is just cutting, so there's not a lot of UV light emitted from that. But obviously, when you're doing electric arc welding, there's significant UV light emissions. You can see this is on the other side of our neighborhood, just hauling steel down the road there. This is another loading/unloading across the sidewalk because they can't be bothered to go into the parking lot because they often have too much junk in the parking lot to get these semi-trailers in here. Dragging a trailer down the road with a forklift there, you can see it kind of crowded that car out, and they had to wait there. This is a sidewalk that the kids used to walk on quite a bit, and steel too, to some extent. You can see steel was moving by them pretty often, fairly close to the kids there. Some more kids on that same sidewalk. I guess I'm out of time, and next time I'll show you a whole bunch more. And I'll even give you a very exciting audio visual here pretty soon.
Thank you. Okay, there's nobody else on the list, so everybody else that signed up is signed up for the public hearing. So I guess we'll start on the ordinance on second reading.
Which is now. There are two ordinances associated with the Copper Mill Apartments, so I'll read both of those into the record. And you can have one public hearing on both, but you'll need to act on them separately. So the first one is ordinance 2014-04, a bail foreign ordinance approving the land use amendment to the Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan for the Copper Mill Apartments, generally located southeast of Ken Pratt Boulevard, south of Great Western Drive and west of Mill Village. The second ordinance is ordinance 2014-05, a bail foreign ordinance conditionally approving the Copper Mill Apartments rezoning from general industrial GI to high-density residential R3, generally located southeast of Ken Pratt Boulevard, south of Great Western Drive and west of Mill Village. And Erin Fosdick, our senior planner, will introduce this item.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs, members of council. I'm Erin Fosdick with the Economic Development Department. And tonight, we are here to discuss and have a second reading and public hearing for the Copper Mill Apartments land use amendment and rezoning. So these are land use decisions. Both of these are land use decisions where city council is the decision-making body. I just want to clarify that this is not an appeal hearing. I know you've had several land use decisions come to you in that manner, but these two are more city councils, the decision-making bodies, so that's what's before you tonight. So I plan to give a short presentation, introduce the item to council. Obviously, be available for questions. The applicant is here to also give a presentation. And then, if you'll recall from your January 21st meeting, you did agree to allow the homeowners to do a consolidated presentation. And so there are a number of homeowners that have prepared a presentation that they will do once the public hearing is open, so that's kind of what we were thinking for the progression tonight. Certainly, if council expects something different, we can entertain that. So as I mentioned, this is a proposal for a land use amendment and rezoning for approximately 17.7 acres located in the East Side neighborhood. Oh, thanks. As the materials in your packet indicate, the applicant is pursuing this amendment and rezoning to facilitate the development of high-density residential, approximately 260 apartments with associated parking, clubhouse, and other associated uses. This property is located in the East Side neighborhood, planned neighborhood planning area of the comp plan. It's southeast of Ken Pratt Boulevard, south of Great Western Drive, and west of the Mill Village neighborhood. I do want to note that this particular property is not actually part of the Mill Village planned unit development. It's adjacent to it. This property was annexed in 1996. It was part of the approximately 44-acre Sugar Mill Park Annexation Number Two. At the time, the property was designated industrial economic development in the Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan, and it did receive zoning of general industrial. So let me just go through the two applications that are before you. I'll start with the land use amendment. The proposal for the land use amendment is to change the current industrial economic development, we refer to that as IED, land use, to a high-density residential land use. IED land uses in the comp plan are really described, they're envisioned to include low-intensity industrial uses, including light manufacturing, warehousing, and distribution, research and development, and commercial services. They're also intended to encourage high-quality employment facilities. That's the comp plan kind of description. High-density residential land uses, as described in the Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan, accommodate multifamily residential housing and group living facilities at a density of between 12 and 30 dwelling units per acre. So for a 17.7-acre site, this would accommodate between about 212 and 531 units on the property. The applicant is proposing to construct 252 multifamily units. You can see from the comprehensive plan map excerpted that's up here, this property is surrounded on the north, west, and south by industrial economic development, and then to the east is residential land uses. Ken Pratt Boulevard to the northwest of the site is designated as an expressway in the comprehensive plan. There's a district park designated south of the site along the St. Brain Greenway. Locational criteria are included in the Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan for various land uses, and this is a guide to help determine locations for those land uses. The locational criteria for high-density residential include areas adjacent to or within walking distance of schools, parks, neighborhood, and multi-neighborhood shopping, proximity to employment centers, areas adjacent to arterial streets or accessible to such without passing through less-intensive land uses, areas where high-density is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, and areas served by public transportation. Staff did provide an analysis of how this project meets these locational criteria in the Planning and Zoning Commission packet, which is included in council's packet. I'd be happy to provide additional detail on that if council desires. The rezoning is associated, obviously, with the land use amendment, and it's to change the existing zoning of the property from general industrial to high-density residential. The current zoning GI, as described in the Land Development Code, is intended for general industrial, manufacturing, storage, and other related activities. These are uses that typically require separation or isolation from other types of land uses, and they may need extensive outdoor storage or activity areas. Our three districts are intended to accommodate higher-density residential uses like multifamily housing or group living facilities. Again, more detailed information is provided in your packet as part of the original packet that went to Planning and Zoning Commission on the types of uses that are permitted by right or as a limited use in each of these zoning districts, and I can elaborate on those if council desires. So these are the land use amendment review criteria. I'm not going to read these because I violated every PowerPoint rule by putting so many words on the slide. But we obviously went through these, and the applicant will go through the review criteria in their presentation for both the land use amendment and rezoning. But as outlined in your packet, the proposal to change the land use from IED to high-density residential appears to meet the review criteria. The proposal meets several goals, policies, and strategies of the Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan, including many goals, policies, and strategies from both the housing and land use and urban design sections. This application did, of course, go through the Development Review Committee process. The DRC did find that adequate utility capacity exists to serve the proposed project. Police and fire service are also available to the site. City traffic engineering does concur with the applicant's analysis that the proposal can be accommodated into the greater roadway system. The amendment doesn't appear to affect existing properties as there are already a range of residential uses in the area. However, I will note that many of the comments that we received and that are included in your packet, that I am sure you will hear as well tonight from the neighbors, have argued that the proposal would have negative effects on the existing residential land uses. So this wording's even smaller. There's more rezoning criteria. These are the review criteria that are used to evaluate a rezoning. This proposal, if approved, would be consistent with the proposed high-density residential land use. As stated previously, this would meet several goals, policies, and strategies of the Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan. Again, the application went through DRC, found that adequate capacity exists, police and fire service are available. The school district indicated that there is sufficient capacity in elementary, middle, and high school to serve this development. Traffic engineering, again, did concur that the proposal can be accommodated and that the proposed zoning would generate less traffic than the current GI zoning. And as we discussed in the materials that we've provided in your packet, the property is within a half mile of an active bald eagle nest, so we did receive comments from parks and wildlife. Any development either under this proposed zoning or under the existing zoning would need to consult with U.S. Fish and Wildlife. There would be specific restrictions on development in terms of timing and things like that. The city has had to comply with those, both on city projects and other development projects in the area. The land uses shown on the proposed concept plan are consistent with zoning, and they don't constitute a spot zone. So at the December 18th meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission did consider this item. They found that the land use amendment and rezoning satisfied the applicable requirements outlined in the Development Code, and they did recommend approval of this project four to one to council. So with that, I will take any questions from council.
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Erin, I still don't see how it is close to public transportation. I don't... I don't see that, how it meets that need.
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Finley, you're correct that this site is not located near a fixed route transit stop. The closest one, I believe, is at, I want to say Third and Alpine. This site, like any site in the city, does have access to call and ride. So that's kind of how that's met. It does not have access to fixed route transit service.
And where's the nearest school at that these people would be going to school at?
So the... This property is within the Skyline High School area. The elementary school is Rocky Mountain Elementary, and Trail Ridge Middle School is the middle school for this area.
Councilmember Christensen.
So children certainly couldn't walk there because it would be me crossing a major highway. And the call and ride, sometimes people have to wait for an hour to get the call and ride. So those are problematic areas of access. But what I'm... The question I have is, we just recently got a report from Avalanche, and one of the major problems they cited is that we lack just exactly this kind of industrial, light industrial space. So we're taking away yet another chunk of industrial space that we need to attract businesses for better jobs, and we're replacing it with high-density housing that is not actually what I would classify as affordable because if you look at the wages of the average Walmart employee who might be working down the street, they would get at most at $8 an hour if they were working full-time. They would get $1,280 a month, and at minus 25% tax, which they'd be paying, they'd get $960. So the $870 that they would have to pay for the rent would be, leave them $100 to pay for food, car insurance, clothes, gas, oil, utilities, et cetera. So I don't understand how this would be helpful to us, to add more high-density housing rather than to add jobs, which are what they... The people in the housing development were promised in the first place, is retail stays and jobs.
Mayor Coombs, may I address that? One of the points regarding Avalanche Consulting in the report that we received a few weeks ago, that I did just want to touch on, did call, as you say, for more industrially zoned areas. They were not specific in terms of where they thought that we should be looking. But one of the things that we have been asked to look at this based on that report, this particular request, and one of the things that I think is important to note is that when Mill Village started in 1994, planning staff actually opposed putting housing in this area. But as the area has developed as a residential area, putting industrial uses next to that now-existing housing would not be an appropriate land use.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Here we are again. Love my Tuesdays. Love them. The... I guess the questions I have, if you go back... Can you go back two slides? Okay, so... So the amendment should not adversely affect the existing or planned use of adjacent properties. Okay, so my question number one, and if you go to the next slide, similar. So the intended land... Number five, the intended land uses in site design shown in the concept plan are consistent with the intent and purpose of the zoning, and will be compatible with existing and planned development on surrounding properties and neighborhoods. So my question is, to what extent has the city and the Planning and Zoning Commission actually looked at not only the existing neighborhood, but also the Mill Village planned apartments? And what is the response to tho... My question is, is it... Is this proposal, are both proposals consistent with those statements? What... How will that impact the neighborhood, property values, traffic, all the concerns that I'm sure that I'm going to hear from the neighbors here in just a little bit, as well as the proposed Mill Village property up to the north?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Bagley, the city certainly does evaluate items that are in the review criteria, such as traffic. And I should have mentioned that Tyler Stamey with Public Works is here if council has specific questions on traffic. But for... With that specific example, we did find that this proposed rezoning and land use amendment would not generate additional traffic other than... You know, we can't evaluate it based on today's condition of vacant land. We evaluate it based on, you know, future development of general industrial, and the traffic study did find that that would result in fewer trips, actually, than what's on the ground today with the general industrial. You know, we don't... Housing affordability, and we don't really use that as a review criteria, nor do we look at property values. I mean, I think we could all pull out a number of studies that talk about housing values and industrial or high-density or low-density effects on residential property values, but that's not one of our review criteria, so we don't study that. You know, I think that this question is really kind of at the crux of council's decision. You know, there are a variety of residential uses in the area now in terms of both single-family and townhome product and soon-to-be multifamily. You know, I think one of the things that we looked at was the housing need study that was done in 2012, and this applicant did provide an update to that as part of their application. And so certainly, when we look at that study, as well as land supply data in our planning area, you know, we came to the conclusion that high-density housing is in need. We also did talk to the LAEC about, you know, the loss of this general industrial and IED land, and that was not a concern for them. This is not... You know, I think if we were talking about a different area of town, their response certainly would have been different, and they probably would actually be here tonight speaking to you about that. But we certainly did consult them early on in the process, and this was not a site that they frankly felt strongly about. So, you know, we kind of take all those things into account when we're looking at making our decision, but I think ultimately, that's really something that the council is going to need to look at as you make your decision.
I guess it always comes back to bite me in the butt, but I'm a big believer in telling you what I'm thinking, and these are my concerns, and then as you present, you can address them. The first thing that came to mind, if I were living in that neighborhood, that presentation that was given by Brian Hanson... that was given by Brian Hanson, that presentation that was given by Brian Hanson, the conflict there is the result of residential being next to light industrial. So that is a concern. I mean, if I were living in that neighborhood, the question becomes, do I want apartment buildings, or do I want that? Okay? So that's number one. Number two, the other question I'm having, but then again, that's not my call, you know. But then number two, as I, it goes back to Councilmember Christensen's comment, I'm actually on the other end, and that is that, if I remember correctly, last time the developer was here, in order to make this project work, my understanding was that you wanted to be on the, and I'm, and I'm making some assumptions here, but in order to make the project work, you needed to be able to say that the median income was bolder, but then get people in Weld County to live here. Or maybe it's the, yeah, yeah, the median, you need to use the median income to qualify for certain financial benefits with the county and the state, and, but you needed to do it right on the edge, which causes me some trepidation as to the quality of the buildings, what do the numbers look like? Again, none of my business, but again, if I were, you know, developing a high-density residential neighborhood like Mill Village, which has already been approved, and especially if I were living in a single-family unit, I'd be concerned about, okay, well, we've already got high-density moving into the north, and the city council basically approved this under the auspices of saying it's tweaking the plan, but now this is actually changing zoning in the, the long-term area comprehensive plan. So as much as before I was willing to look at the neighbors and take the hit, this time I'm like, well, this is different because it just, it just feels different. So again, just concerns that you can address during, during the presentation. And my final question is, why would we be, if, if the city said, quote, "At the meeting staff also recommended that the commission may want to reconsider, or to consider suggesting to council that an overall land use plan for this area be undertaken to better understand future development opportunities and constraints." What that translates to me is that we're being asked to make a decision when we don't have all the data. So that's a concern that I've listed for the residents. Do you want light industrial right across from your homes? It's a concern to the developer that you're going to be sandwiching the neighborhood between high-density and high-density, but yours will be low-income, which if I was a neighbor, that would tick me off. And then the city, why are we addressing this when the city staff is basically saying, we're asking you to consider something, but you don't have all the data? You don't know what we should do down south yet. So three concerns for three different people or three different organizations that have, that have something to say tonight, I'm sure.
Hey, Aaron, can you clarify something for me? I think I heard you say that if that thing was fully developed as general industrial, that that would result in more traffic than if it's just the high-density. Is that what I heard you say?
Mayor Coombs, I'll have Tyler address the specifics of the traffic study. And while he's coming down, I would just advise council that at a previous meeting, you did direct us to take a look at a subarea plan update. We have started that effort in terms of gathering data and reaching out to staff. We'll be providing an information item to you at, I guess, your next meeting, which is on the 25th now. You know, really what, I don't know that I would say you don't have all the information at this point. You have all the information that exists today with the current comprehensive plan, and that was what our evaluation was based on. You know, we have land use applications in process, and since there's not a moratorium on development at this point, it's not, the staff can't just say, we're not, we're not going to process these. So that effort will begin. It has begun, and we will be providing you information on the scope of that at your 25th meeting.
I think, I think the answer to your question too, just breaking it down to the, to its point, is it's really the applicant's decision in terms of whether or not they want to move forward with that request, and I think that question came up during the last council meeting, and I believe the applicant indicated that there were some timing issues in, in terms of that discussion. So planning staff has to respond to those applications, and they can't choose when and where they bring it forward.
Mayor Coombs, Tyler Stamey, Public Works Engineering.
Our traffic study was provided by the applicant, and they did look at this parcel of land that were of the center consideration tonight, and assumed if that was developed as general light industrial accommodation, industrial office building, typical with what we've seen kind of on the, in other areas or other, in that part of town, other developments that we've seen come in for application, making a bit of an assumption on what those could be and what they might be. Yes, it could generate more traffic. It was about a thousand trips more a day based on the land uses assumed in the study that light industrial would generate than the residential.
Thank you. Councilmember Levinson.
Tyler, based on what? Based on what type of businesses? If you had a general industrial use for this land that needed a lot of land for the operations, maybe it could be, it could be even something like a used store, self-store place. Then you would have virtually no traffic in and out. I mean, I think what we need is clarification on the range of traffic. So if you put up a three-story office building and had, you know, multiple companies, then you'd have a large parking lot and perhaps, you know, many employees parking, and they'd all come in and out basically at the same time of day. And that's a different situation than perhaps a self-storage location, or, you know, a veterinary clinic, or, you know, any of the range of uses where it could be light traffic throughout the day. So can you give us an idea of what ranges you would look at?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Levinson, what we did was we assumed a mix of uses out there. The general light industrial is a pretty low trip generator, and you're absolutely right. Self-storage really doesn't generate a whole lot of traffic. If the whole thing came in as self-storage, it would be much less traffic than the high-density residential would generate as well.
And then I guess I had a telephone conversation with Ms. Fosik earlier this afternoon, and I'm wondering what the tipping point of traffic is, though, before we look at the capacity of Great Western Avenue and Third, and that intersection of Third and Ken Pratt being overloaded. My, looking forward, should you have this intensity now, then I'm looking at several other parcels of land that are still available. So when do you then restrict someone else's use of land because we've hit this tipping point? And then who would pay for the new road? I mean, once the horse is out of the barn, you can't ask, you know, developers, you know, especially the current applicant, to pay for a road when it might be needed five years from now because other, other uses have come in that need that additional capacity.
Councilmember Levinson, so this study did include a look at all those future land uses, all the surrounding parcels, and did assume that those would be built out and developed in the long-range future. And based on that, the, the roads, the tipping point for the roads is the through on Ken, on 119. That's what's going to drive needs for improvement there. It won't be related to developments in Mill Village. It's going to be the higher-through volume on 119 that drives ultimate capacity restrictions at that intersection.
And so the parcel, I'm looking at the map in the packet, where the parcel is there directly to the north of the parcel, what is that land zone right now?
BLI.
BLI, okay. And so I guess that could have just as much, it could have a very high volume of traffic or a low volume of traffic influence too, right?
Absolutely, and that was included in our future projections in the study.
And then I'm also recalling from past history, great, there was a question with Great Western Drive when the Walmart property was being proposed, that there was supposed to be eventually, I think, a light at Great Western to make sure that residents of the Mill Village development could get in and out easily onto County Line Road. Would this development, as it appears on the map, to feed into Great Western, at one point, does the capacity of Great Western demand a light at County Line, or was that looked at as well as in the traffic study?
In this traffic, in this particular traffic study, they showed a, they assumed a signal there in the long-range 2035 planning horizon. That was mostly a remnant of other studies that had looked at that as well. This particular site generates about, based on their information, about 10 trips in the PM peak hour on Great Western east of the site. This, this development would not be driving that need.
10 trips per hour only?
During the PM peak hour, the, most of the traffic from this site would be going north on Third Avenue or...
That's the, that's the assumption, thinking that people would automatically be going west as far, as far, as opposed to east.
And is, and going east. If you, if you want to go north on Third, you've got a free-running right onto 119. You get up to speed. It's, there's no time-saving by driving Great Western, making a left on County Line Road.
And would that, the 2035 window for the traffic light move up at all?
It's way, it's one of those, it's not a, this will be put in by 2035. It's an if and when warrants are met.
Okay, all righty. I just, you know, I'm just still concerned about the traffic movement there. It's a, it's a very intensely-used intersection, and I go through there frequently, and I see people really running the edge of those yellows. And it's, it's real, real interesting sometimes being at that intersection. So I may have questions later, but thank you for answering these.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So I guess I missed the point. We have several bullet points here of requirements to move forward these land use policies, or changes without impacting local neighborhoods. I don't see how this cannot impact the local neighborhood. Walking distances to schools and shopping, it's not even close. What it's going to require is just everybody's going to have to drive, and every family's going to have two cars, you're going to have a thousand more cars out there. And so I, I'm really having a problem seeing the logic behind all this. And I think a lot of it's really coming back to the comprehensive plan. It's 10 years old now. It's outdated. It's really not fulfilling the need of the current situation in Longmont. We probably, we may not even be having this discussion, had the comp plan been updated. That being said, we need to, I think that's where we need to place our efforts and get the comp plan put together right. I mean, we may want some industrial land out there, but it doesn't mean that this particular property couldn't be updated in the comp plan to be less intensive use like retail and end up with a, a product that is more suitable for the neighborhood. We're kind of taking a piecemeal approach. We're, we're having to jump in and make these land use changes here and there and everywhere. So we're ending up with a, for lack of a better term, a quilt that doesn't really fit together. The other concern I have, you have 250 low-income units there, and I don't want to end up with a project, a quote, project that we had in New Orleans and Chicago in 30 years. And Longmont does not have to be the center of affordable housing in, in, in the area. And for those reasons, I really am having a problem with seeing the logic behind all this, so.
Can I just clarify one quick thing? Just Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Moore, just so we're clear, the locational criteria are included in the comp plan as a guide for where land uses can be located. Those are not the review criteria by which to make your decision. So I just want to make the distinction that you are correct, that there are locational criteria associated with each land use. There are also review criteria upon which, for the rezoning and for the land use amendment by which council evaluates each, each request and makes their decision on. So I just want to clarify those. And certainly, if you have additional questions about the affordability, I think the applicant can address those. I don't know that this is necessarily considered affordable housing from the city's perspective in terms of our thresholds, but certainly the applicant can kind of speak to their target income levels more during their presentation if you have questions about that.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I just have two points. First of all, I can appreciate that property values aren't part of the criteria for, for your valuation, but we represent the people of Longmont. And the people of Longmont who live out there, who have invested their entire life savings trying to have, you know, a home they can afford, they, they should be respected, and we have to, at some point, we have to count in what, what the effect upon their homes to having yet more housing to the north when they were originally promised something else, and then the plan changed, and they were done out of what they were promised. And now they're having the zoning changed for whatever reason. The other, the other point is that this, the hearing on this was December 18, and we just recently got in our packet all of this, very helpful material, but I, I'm wondering why it took two months for council to get the minutes of the, of the Planning and Zoning December 18 meeting. Do you know why that is? Because it would be helpful to have more time to do research.
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Christensen, this information was originally provided on first reading on January 21, which is typical. We just include both the Planning Commission packets, and typically at that point, it's the draft minutes because of the way that the Planning Commission meetings fall, and you know, they have to approve their minutes as well. So all that information is provided at first reading. I don't know, I, I think that council also gets information from the advisory board separately, but that schedule I'm not sure of.
Well, you know, I'm going to keep a totally open mind on this until I hear all the testimony. You know, it's not clear to me, you know, at this point, if I was living there, is my property worth more or less if general industrial is developed right next door to me as to, as opposed to a high-density apartment? I really don't know. You know, when I see those slides of big steel trailers and things like that, that kind of scares me. But, but you know, then again, these people that invested in Mill Village, they looked at the zoning around them, and they bought based on what the zoning was around them. And sometimes when you start changing stuff after people have made a huge investment, then no one in the future could have a lot of confidence in what's going to be zoned around them if everything isn't built out. But, yeah, it's an interesting situation we have, but you know, it's a project that the staff is recommending and that the city needs more of this type of affordable, and it's not, you know, affordable in terms of, you know, ghetto kind of affordable, it's just, you know, affordable for, it's, you know, normal, you know, some of these are going to be, I'm sure, really nice apartments that, you know, with only less than 2.6% vacancy rate, there's, there's just not enough apartments for people to live in, in Longmont, and we need to address that problem. So they need to be built somewhere, whether it's not here, or they need to be built somewhere because there's a demand for the apartments, and we need to, as a city, fill those demands, so. Councilmember Levinson.
Thank you. I would also like to see if we can't fine-tune this issue of, you know, the needs from the Workforce Housing Group. And I think that one of the, one of the, the points with workforce housing or meeting the needs of, of people that are maybe earning 60% or less of AMI is that access to transportation and options for transportation are absolutely a critical need because, you know, a family making 60% of AMI may not necessarily be able to afford the purchase and upkeep and of two vehicles or more even. And I think that when we're, one of the, the criteria for, for housing when we look at our, for seniors or for, in the market in general, is access to different modes of transportation. And to me, that's one of the real concerns of this. The other thing that I would like to know is if the density... The other thing that I would like to know is if the density, if there is an approval, and it could be, let's see, we've got... It could be between 12 and 30 maximum units per acre, correct? And what's being proposed is 252. Could there be an adjustment to that density or a number of units perhaps in the future if the project is, is phased? That was my first question. And then if there is a decision made, could the council put as a condition a, having an absolute firm number of units for the entire 17 acres?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Levinson, you know, I think that council can condition approval as they wish, and we have in the past, at least, we're aware of situations that annexation. I think certainly rezoning and land use amendment is another opportunity that council could restrict density. That would probably need to, you know, we'd need to amend the ordinance or, and put a note on the concept plan likely, so that could be a recommendation. You know, that, I don't know that you would necessarily put a specific number of units because certainly as someone does a site plan, they may want flexibility in terms of, you know, number of units per building, but I think putting an overall density limit would certainly be within council's realm. So, you know, currently this density is kind of on the lower end of the spectrum. Council could determine that they wouldn't want the density to exceed what this project is, or some other number. And I know that, that you had asked for some additional density comparisons, and I apologize if didn't put those in my presentation, but I have that information for you if you want that for a comparison in terms of making that type of recommendation.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. I was actually going to wait till after the presentations to speak, because I was waiting to form an opinion. But having read the material and the planning and zoning minutes that we received several weeks ago, and then reading them again, but I do recall, to Councilmember Levinson's point, when this came up weeks ago, I believe that the person proposing this development said that, you know, be willing to, and I guess they can address this in their presentation. It's 225, 252 units, that they're willing to cap it, and I don't, you know, I do believe I heard that. So, maybe that's something that they can address. It's, I hope, whenever we come into this chamber, it's very difficult to not come in here with preconceived notions and ideas, but apparently some have already. You try to do what's best for everyone. Not everyone likes the decisions we make. As the mayor said, you know, there's, light industrial could be heavy beams, it could be a building, it could be storage units, it could be, as we, in some light industrial, there are big, huge 18-wheeler containers stacked up 30 feet high in some areas. I, you've seen it, you see it around town, you see it on, on Second. Just depends on what you want there. So I would caution members of council, have an open mind, don't have a preconceived notion. And can we get on with the presentations? Because we're beating a dead iron horse here.
All right, I am going to open this up for public hearing on ordinance...
Mayor Coombs, the applicant also has a presentation, which typically, I had advised them that they could go before the public hearing. So I think that Keith James and Scott Morris from the Inland Group are prepared to give a presentation tonight.
Okay. Great.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs and council members. I was going to say that I'm very pleased to be here today, and I think so. But thank you for having us. I'm Scott Morris, I'm with the Inland Group. We work in 11 western states as a contractor, developer, and owner of multifamily apartment communities, and I mention that for two, two reasons. One is for the continuity that you'll see through this process, through the development, hopefully through the construction and ownership also. And also to just let you know, we're not asking to build in your city, we're asking to join the community if we're lucky enough to do so. With me is Keith James, who I'm sure you remember from the first reading. Keith's actually going to start, I'm going to have Keith come up and talk about the project, and then I will come back up and address the criteria for both the land use amendment and the rezone, and then the two of us will be available to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott, Mayor, council members, Keith James with the Inland Group. As stated and indicated by Aaron, we're proposing a 252 unit. I will call it a moderate-income apartment community. We propose 11 residential buildings and a clubhouse. What you would typically see, when you, when you envision market-rate apartments, this is really that. It's three-story garden-style product, wood frames, built around a common clubhouse. Clubhouse offers a pool and a top lot, has some outdoor amenities space, as well as the offices, a business center, a fitness center, a gathering place essentially in addition to the apartment units. You know, not to directly counter some of what I'm sure we'll hear from the neighbors, but we, we've really attempted to design as, as low an impact multifamily use as possible. With that, we've not sought any variances from any development standards, including the parking standards. The requirement is for 507 stalls for the proposed 252 units. That puts us right over two stalls per unit. It's a mixture of garage stalls, which would be reserved, and surface stalls that are open, first come, first served. The density is, is right around 15 units to the acre, so much more toward the low-to-medium density than it is a true high-density residential. And I, I will reiterate, Councilmember Santos, your memory is correct, we would gladly offer a cap on density at the 252 units as proposed. If that gets worked in as a condition to the rezone ordinance, we would be more than happy with that. I was out, gosh, I think initially in about February for a pre-op meeting with the city, and then again in June of last year to meet with the neighborhood. And that initial neighborhood meeting was, was not very well attended. We're, of course, since gotten out, and I think it would have been helpful maybe to meet again. Instead, we're meeting in this, in this arena, which is fine too. I just want council especially to know that we have taken into account neighborhood comments. I went as far as to go and meet with the townhomes that are immediately adjacent to the site, so drainage ditch between, but they would be most impacted. We made some site plan changes. Tried to leave the center of the site open so that the view corridors to the west are preserved. There's almost a four, it's actually a little over a 400-foot setback to the first building from those townhomes, which is pretty remarkable. A typical setback requirement might be 20 to 30 feet, so certainly substantial. They had a couple of other minor concerns, for example, a fence, we'll need to fence along the property line there, but again, to preserve a view rather than having a solid fence, to have an open fence, a wrought iron or other open fence. We're certainly not just open to that, but completely willing to do that. As Scott said, the idea is to be a community member, not come in, but, not come into the neighborhood, but be a part of the neighborhood. Just to clarify, I, I referenced the property as moderate-income housing, and that's really what it is. And the difference between the numbers, the financial numbers working in Boulder County versus working in Weld County, the, the matter is really, incomes are restricted at a certain percentage of area median income, that's based on the county median income. Therefore, the rents that we would be allowed to charge if we were on the Weld County side would be well below market, well below market for Longmont. And the result would be, we wouldn't be able to afford those rents generating the income we wouldn't be able to afford to construct a market-rate style apartment community, which is exactly what we're proposing. You go to our other affordable or moderate-income properties, you will not notice a difference between them and a market-rate property. You don't notice it from the street, you don't notice it from the common areas, you don't notice it from the units. It's really just a financing mechanism, and there is an income restriction. Councilmember Christensen, you're correct, a Walmart employee may not be able to afford our units. However, who can afford it is administrative staff, service employees, LPNs, actually a great deal of teachers in the St. Brain Valley School District would be able to afford it. It is truly workforce housing, and I, I believe, and the market study confirms, a lot of those folks today that live, excuse me, that work in Longmont can't live in Longmont because there's not adequate housing supply. I would finally, I think I actually touched on everything I would have mentioned, rents affordable at about the range of 850 to 1100, so they're, the, the idea is to be a bit below market otherwise, but again, affordable to workforce, not necessarily what you would typically consider affordable or low-income housing. Turn it back over to Scott, and then be available for questions.
Thank you. So, in a typical rezone, I would definitely start by hammering home the economic benefits to the city of the project, which in this case, we're talking about a $22.5 million construction project. 60% of that is labor, and 90% of that on average would be local labor. We're not bringing laborers down here, we're subcontracting out the work, and most of it is local. There's approximately $2.5 million of fees that would be paid to the city, and interestingly, we are not asking for any waiver of fees or any funding incentives from the city. The use tax associated with the construction would be about $750,000. There'd be an ongoing property tax of about $100,000 a year. We'll have six full-time employees budgeted at $230,000 a year. We'll have $75,000 a year in service contracts for landscaping and pool maintenance, things that will be done around here. And we budget $50,000 a year for ongoing repairs and maintenance. So there is a significant benefit that I normally would be driving home as the main basis, but in this case, all of that pales in comparison to the demand for rental housing that the city of Longmont is facing. And that is the real and most significant benefit of this project. I know that you're all familiar with the housing need assessment that was done in August of 2002, which summarized that there would need to be 200 units a year for 10 straight years just to meet the current housing demand, forgetting what's coming in the next 10 years and the fact that people today are looking to rent. There's been a change in demographic, a lot of people who are renting, and it's a significant amount, almost 50%, are renting not because they can't afford other housing, because they're choosing to rent. We, in November of 2013, following the floods, had the assessment updated, and of the 1,782 units that were surveyed, 17 vacant units were found, so less than 1%. Of the 1,206 affordable units, which is 15 properties, there were two. That's less than 2/10 of 1%. So no doubt, there's long waiting lists, and no doubt, the rents continue to rise at an alarming rate. So what you have here is, is somewhat of a housing crisis. And with that in mind, the leadership of this city that represents the entire city, not the neighborhoods, I would hope would be looking for a way to say yes and not looking for a way to say no. And I'm not saying you shouldn't be saying yes, but, but looking for ways to say yes, because we have to, you have to address that housing shortage. I fully realize there's politics involved in this decision, and I realize there's a lot of neighborhoods who are, of neighbors who are against this project, which I'll address. And I know it's impossible, but if we could flash forward two years from now, this room would be filled, and there'd be a standing line out there of 300 to 400 new residents who would be saying thank you. And these, when I say new residents, these are new residents to Longmont. With the vacancy rates, I can safely say that these people are going to come from outside of Longmont to live here. And so you have new residents who are working in Longmont, who were commuting, who are now living here, buying their groceries here, eating at the restaurants here, spending their money, and becoming a part of this community. And that's the long-term economic development that is important from, from the housing side. So I'm going to address the criteria, and I acknowledge to you, this criteria is extremely broad, and there's no doubt that arguments can be made on both sides, strong arguments, and the neighbors will make arguments just as I will. And I think that that's intentional. There's flexibility. The introduction to the comprehensive plan states that the comprehensive plan is the latest in the city of Longmont's effort to plan for its future. City planning cannot be a static process. It must be flexible and continuously revised to reflect changing circumstances and community values, particularly in a dynamic, growing city such as Longmont. So with this flexibility and this housing demand, it allows you to not only meet it, but to try and meet it in a place that has adequate utilities, adequate services, adequate infrastructure, a compatible neighborhood, and a school district that would support the project, all of which are present here. The criteria for the land use designation starts with, it's to implement the goals, policies, and strategies of the comprehensive plan. Well, those goals include to promote housing, to encourage residential growth, and to provide a wide range of housing to meet a variety of socioeconomic groups, all of which this satisfies. The locational policies, and again, they're broad and there's many, and you can pick one out and say, but you don't have public transportation. And I can tell you, well, if you put these house stops in there, you're more likely to get the public transportation to go support the needs because they don't go to places where there's not rooftops. But there's certainly, this is near employment centers, this is near parks, it's adjacent to our, our arterials, and it's adjacent to a neighborhood with similar and compatible uses. This project also satisfies other land use criteria in that, in the immediate neighborhood, there's a lot of vacant industrial land that is vacant, where there's not high-density residential land. And so you're not creating a shortage of one for the benefit of the other in this neighborhood. The studies, and we believe our consultants will show, that this designation on, in general, will result in less traffic than the current designation of industrial use, and certainly that's not true for every single industrial use. But if you take a, a reasonable industrial use, you'll tend to have less traffic with the high-density residential. The high-density residential is a better fit in a neighborhood with low-density residential. It's a less intrusive use. If you look at the locational policies for industrial, they don't want them next to residential. What you have is that here is a low-density, that you have an opportunity to put a buffer in between the industrial and the low-density with a high-density, which is a typical city planning-type device. And this also, also should not be lost in here, is that we believe this will be a better gateway into the city with the improvements to 119. It is now the gateway, and typically you wouldn't see industrial as the gateway into the city. And this will not only be a better gateway, it'll also promote the retail and the commercial that the neighbors want to see when you have more rooftops, that's when it tends to follow. Finally, the new land use designation should have minimal or no adverse effect on the existing facilities, the existing services, the existing utilities, all of which are adequate, on transportation in that there is adequate infrastructure in place. And important to note that with the traffic in this case, it's not diverted through the residential neighborhood. The traffic pursuant to the study and common sense is going to head right to the arterials. And last, no adverse effect to the adjacent properties, which I acknowledge is going to be a hotly contested point when we turn to the neighbors, and I do want to address the neighbors real quickly and let you know that we appreciate your arguments, we appreciate your passion, we actually view your passion as a good thing. We don't want to move into a neighborhood with indifferent neighbors. That means you don't care. The fact that you do care is great. We don't take your positions personally, and I hope you don't take ours. If we're not... If we're not successful, we're going to shake hands and walk away, and if we are successful, I hope we can work together in the future to make the best of the situation, which I know is not the situation you want to face. I think the problem comes from the fact that, when we have like the disagreement, we're not seeing things the same, is that a lot of the analysis and the arguments they make are based on vacant land. They're comparing our project to the vacant land, our property values, which we dispute, there's no data out there, it's going to change it particularly with regards to industrial use. With respect to traffic, certainly, there's more traffic than vacant land, and with respect to parking, certainly, there's more. So, the proper analysis is comparing it to its existing use versus the proposed use. We're also going to hear arguments that there's already high-density residential in the neighborhood, it's already been acknowledged in here, and I'd tell you that technically, that's actually an argument in support of the zone change, because it's one of the criteria, that you don't want to put it into an area where there's not compatible uses. And I'll tell you that our property, that's up there, does not, is not immediately adjacent to any single-family homes. It's immediately adjacent to a low-density residential townhome, which there's a six-plex and a four-plex immediately to the east. And if this changes, what you're actually going to have is a single-family converting to a lower-density residential, converting to a higher-density residential, converting to a industrial. And it's a nice, as far as the city plan goes, is a nice buffer in between each of the, each of the uses. I know time's getting short here, and I want to move quickly. The rezone criteria, it's real similar to the land use, I'm happy to address any of them, but they basically go through the same things as people were pointing, and you're going through the slides. But the rezone criteria does have one different thing, is that there's actually a requirement that the rezone must be justified by one of six conditions. And I think we meet several, but there's one, and that's condition number six, which I think is particularly on point. I'm going to read it to you. It says, "That the rezoning presents the city with a unique opportunity or an appropriate site at an appropriate location for the particular type of land use or development proposed, and will help the city achieve a balance of land use, tax base, and/or housing types, consistent with the city's overall planning and economic development goals." And I'll tell you that, to me, it's almost like this unique opportunity was written for this project. An opportunity to take a land use that is underutilized right now in this neighborhood and convert it to one where there's a significant shortage in the city of Longmont, to satisfy the huge and important housing demand, to improve the city gateway and encourage more commercial development, to create a buffer between the low-density residential and the industrial, which I think everyone acknowledges is not a normal situation, and to promote economic development, both the short term with the construction fee and taxes, and in the long term with jobs, contracts, and most importantly, new residents. And you have this opportunity at a project that's not seeking any waivers, any variances, or any financial incentives or funding, and you have the opportunity to do it in a location where there's similar uses in the neighborhood, where there's adequate facilities, adequate services, adequate utilities, adequate infrastructures and roadways to support the traffic, where traffic won't be diverted through the neighborhood, and where you have a school district that has the adequate capacity and supports the project. So city staff has determined that we met the criteria, and they support the project, or they support the land use amendment and the rezone. The Planning and Zoning Commission determined that we met the criteria, and they support the land use amendment and the rezone, and we respectfully request, despite the difficult job that you have in front of you, that the city council do the same. We'll be available to answer any questions now or after the presentation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Where will the management direction come from for this project?
Well, we'll have a property management company, we use, currently, we use FPI Management.
Are they based in Colorado?
They are based in Sacram, Balsam, California. However, they're a large player in the Colorado market, all through the front range. This is not new to them, they've helped us look at this market, and they're familiar with it. They'll have local property managers, leasing agents, from, from the area.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I'll now open this up for public hearing, and the first, so this will be a public hearing on both ordinances, oh, twenty-fourteen dash oh-four and oh, twenty-four dash oh-five. And, so I understand we're going to have a fifteen-minute block.
We'll try to make it fifteen.
Okay.
Mayor Coombs, city council members, my name is Susan Halsted, I live at three-oh-nine Maggie Street, and I'm here to represent the homeowners for the copper, not for the copper, mill apartments, for the homeowners for the Mill Village subdivision, and also to express our strong opposition to this proposed development. We'd first like to thank you for allowing us this fifteen minutes. We're appreciative that you're taking the time to listen to our concerns, and we're also appreciative of the time and the thought that you've put behind this. As I hear your different arguments, I'm realizing that you really have read our comments and have really thought about how this will impact our neighborhood, and that means a lot to me, and I know that it means a lot to my neighbors. So, the major points, what we would like to do first tonight, and what I'm going to present, is how we believe that the copper mill apartment proposal conflicts with the Longmont area comprehensive plan, and in spite of what everyone here has tried to explain tonight, that it fits, we just really don't see how that's the case. I do agree that an apartment complex will bring a lot of money into Longmont, I do agree that an apartment complex is sorely needed, we realize that there's a lot of lack of housing in Longmont, but our question is, why so much in our neighborhood? We have two huge complexes going up around us, and another one around us, it's just almost like, well, let's just throw up our hands in dismay and say, you know what, we quit, we give up, because, you know, we were promised something else when we bought our homes, we realized what the housing, what the zoning was when we bought our homes, and now it's being changed all around us, and we feel like we have absolutely no power to change that, so I appreciate your listening to us. And then other homeowners are going to address additional concerns that they have. So, just to kind of, some of the points that you're going to hear me say tonight are a little bit redundant, but I would like to be the last person to at least say them. As you know, we will be a neighborhood that's going to be completely surrounded now by apartments, and I can't think of a single neighborhood in Longmont that has this, that will have this kind of density around it. We are currently one-hundred-and-sixty single-family homes in Mill Village, they're, the Mill Village apartments are going up now, which I think are approximately two-hundred-and-twenty units, the apartments are going up near Sandstone, which are also high-density, and then with this additional development, I think there'll be, we keep saying two-hundred-and-sixty, it's approximately two-hundred-and-sixty. So you get the sense that we are actually going to be outnumbered by the amount of apartments around us. And again, we agree that, you know, Longmont has a housing crisis in terms of its apartments, but we just don't understand why we're being asked this side of Longmont to bear the brunt of that. Why not have a more even-distributed housing plan? And one thing that really struck us from the, from the January twenty-first meeting was the fact that the developer did mention that should city council desire more time to consider this plan in more detail, he would not be willing to wait on that, and he mentioned tax rates and whatnot, and I'm just wondering why city council should feel backed into a corner, that we need to make this decision now or never, something that's going to affect hundreds of families, homeowners and taxpayers, that should not be taken lightly. And I agree, and even Aaron had mentioned in the January twenty-first meeting, that a more comprehensive study needs to take place, this Comprehensive Plan is ten years old. Why would we be making decisions so quickly on something that has so much importance for our neighborhood and for our, our town as a rule? So, one of the things that also occurred to us as we were meeting, we've had a lot of neighborhood meetings, and we've been discussing a lot of things on Nextdoor, which is, when you start modifying the Comprehensive Plan in an ad hoc fashion, as developers come up and they have ideas about, well, let's use this land, and I'm sure that the developer's going to get a very good deal on that property, because it's been for sale for like twenty years now, our question is, why do we have such a plan? You know, why are these plans in place if they can just be modified at will, and I think somebody had mentioned in kind of a quote-like fashion, that doesn't seem to make sense? We bought our homes, and a lot of people have made the argument that, well, you could have something worse around you, and we would much prefer to take that fight when it comes, as opposed to just speculating now about what could happen. We bought our homes with the promise of a different plan, and we in fact were not promised to have a bunch of high-density apartments around us, and I can tell you from my point of view, had I known that this would happen, I certainly would not have bought my property. When you start undermining, at least from a philosophical point of view, when you start changing a plan in an ad hoc fashion, according to which kind of proposals come up, you really do undermine the confidence of taxpayers and the city council, and you also kind of undermine the commitment that, that the city makes to its citizens. When you have a plan, there's a reason why that plan is in place. We know that things do change, and we're flexible with that, but we also understand that those changes should also be in cooperation with local landowners and homeowners that live, that live close by, not when we are constantly asking you, please protect our properties, please protect our neighborhood from this kind of development. So, I want to address just a couple of issues, there are a lot of reasons for which I think that the Comprehensive Plan kind of is contradicted by the proposal, but things that really stood out to us, in terms of people who have children, people who, you know, know and understand what it's like to live in this neighborhood. Strategy H-two-point-one from the Comprehensive Plan states that high-density housing must be located in areas that are, quote, "adjacent to or within walking distance of schools, parks, and neighborhood, and/or multi-regional, multi-neighborhood shopping." People can make, and I've heard a lot of arguments tonight, that this is close, but it's really not. There's no way that any of this is within walking distance, the schools are certainly not within walking distance of our neighborhood, and in fact, the same strategy states that pedestrian access in particular is an important goal of the school district in order to facilitate community connection to schools and to minimize transportation costs. The closest school is Rockymount Elementary School, it's one-point-five miles away, you must cross, you know, one-nineteen, which is a really busy highway, walk along, and I have a map here, you have to walk across Kent Platte, which I've tried to cross, and it's very difficult, walk along Third Avenue, and then through the, there's no way anybody's going to be walking to school, absolutely no way. So reliable transportation would be necessary to ensure that children will not need to take the bus to school, so children are either going to be taking the bus, or they're going to be driving to school. Parks, the closest city park playground is Rothrock Dell Park, one-point-two miles, and Sandstone Ranch, which is another one to one-point-two miles, so long trip, that's about a two-mile walk just to get to the park, so I really don't consider that walking distance. Shopping, same thing, Walmart is pretty much close, about a mile, back and forth, two miles, I don't know very many people who walk two miles to get groceries. Going on to the next, the rezoning and concept plan amendment, it also states that there will be capacity to provide adequate public services, and, you know, we've kind of heard this argument that, you know, public transportation will come if we build this, but it's kind of like, you know, putting the cart before the horse, right? I mean, you know, the speculation that it will come really seems kind of insufficient to us as an argument at this point. The closest bus stop is Third and Alpine. I'm going to kind of gloss over some of this, because I do want to weave time for the other homeowners, but one thing that really stuck us when we were reading through the Comprehensive Plan was this idea, and I'm going to quote here, "The intended land uses and site designs shown in the concept plan are consistent with the intent and purpose of the zoning, and will be compatible with existing and planned development on surrounding properties and neighborhoods," and there's no way anybody can convince me that another high-density apartment building around our neighborhood is consistent in any way, and the argument that, well, there's only a lot there, so that makes it more consistent, it just doesn't make any sense to me. When we bought our neighborhood, it was planned as a village, ergo, Mill Village, and we were told that it would be kind of like the middle-class Prospect, right, where we would have housing and shopping and kind of an area that was, you know, certainly not surrounded by a ton of apartment buildings. Like I mentioned, there are approximately one-hundred-and-sixty family homes, mostly houses, there are one-hundred-and-forty multifamily homes in the Riverbend HOA, and then there's a light industrial area with blueprint, robotics, and sunflower spot, et cetera. The original concept plans that were made for this area were publicized, and they were publicized with the town center on the north side of the neighborhood, which is now being developed by the Mill Village Apartments. So, Copper Mill, Copper Mill, not even considering the apartments that are going up near Sandstone, would add two-hundred-and-sixty apartments, thus raising the percentage of high-density well above fifty percent. This is not compatible with the existing development, and I must say that we are really, from my point of view, at a crossroads in that area. We can either develop this very smartly and make this area a cornerstone of successful development, things that, you know, taking into account community concerns, not only that, you know, we need housing, but also what's best suited for what's there right now. And, you know, moving in the other direction of just putting a bunch of apartments in there is kind of condemning it to, you know, as somebody had mentioned, and I really don't like, you know, to use that word, but kind of making it the ghetto of Longmont, and that's very, very, very discouraging to us. So I'm going to allow John Wayne to talk now, who will address home values.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, my name's John Wayne, I live at three-fourteen Maggie Street in Mill Village. I've been a real estate broker in Longmont and Boulder County now for over sixteen years. All homeowners, regardless of where they live, are certainly concerned about their property values. Most of Longmont and Boulder County have seen values rise in their neighborhoods recently, but our neighborhood hasn't. I believe the reason for this is because of all the apartments that are presently being built, and the rumor of more going around us. Our property values have already suffered. Regardless of how nice they are, the Mill Village apartments that are going in have had a negative effect on the neighborhood. I know for a fact buyers do not want apartments as neighbors. There was a home on Sugar Bin last year that was under contract and ready to close, and when the buyer found out about the apartments to be built, they backed out of the, backed out of the deal. So to now totally surround us by apartments will cause a further decline in our values and desirability. We have land to the east of us on the south side of Great Western that's approved for apartments, and I understand the land to the south of Walmart is all approved for high-density as well. I believe the city's missing an opportunity in our area, and that being very affordable single-family homes, homes like we already have there. Homes in our neighborhood sell for between roughly two-twenty-five and two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. When I look around at what sells in Longmont for that price elsewhere, it's mostly older homes from the sixties and the seventies. When I look for similar homes in Longmont to ours, they're selling for, starting around three-hundred, but mostly towards the three-fifty range. There's a few homes similar to ours in Prospect, but they sell for five-hundred thousand. So, it seems that we have a unique product in our neighborhood, and that being, again, the affordable, more affordable single-family homes, and it seems like an extension of our neighborhood that we do have would be a smart plan and a plus for the city, as well as the existing Mill Village neighborhood. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Red Hines, I'm at three-twenty-five Maggie Street. I would like to address additionally some of the concerns about affordable housing. I think that it wasn't very long ago that we were, as a group together, it is a close community that we have, talking about the last development that came through, and it's not even completed, it's done, it's in construction now. There was, you know, and as we move forward with, with considering another development, losing my train of thought here, sorry. I think basically what I want to say is that, you know, we're not against affordable housing, we just don't want to, to get into a situation where we're changing the zoning when there is available properties in the city that are already zoned for high-density, that are available to, for, for development, that would not take the decision out of the cities or the residents' hands and putting it in developers' hands, but that were already planned to, to, to have that kind of development, to move forward with. And I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Mayor Council Members, John Thimmy, three-oh-seven Sugar Bin Court, here to speak on that all-familiar thing of traffic, and I really feel for you, because you are forced to make a decision with very little data, and a lot of speculation. You don't know what the new land would bring, seems like with two-hundred-and-fifty-two, we're probably looking at at least five-hundred cars, because there is no public transportation available. And we're stuck where we really don't have data. In the neighborhood, we've noticed a decrease in traffic on Great Western since the bridge on County Road One was washed out. Unfortunately, when we went to the city and said, "Could we get another traffic count so we could sort of have a baseline to look at?" We were sold, "No, you can have the numbers before the flood, but not after the flood." So, I really feel for you that you're stuck. I'm going to let you read my points, they're up there, you can read faster than I can talk, but I feel for you, and traffic is going to be an issue, in some way- In some ways, they're right, it's going to fade out differently, and it's not traffic within our neighborhood, other than I believe there will be an increase on Great Western. But I think you are going to continue to see a backup on Highway 119. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council Members. My name is Deb Luddington, I live on 313 Maggie Street. We just wanted to, as a group, there's a lot of statements that go out, especially around the industrial, the potential of industrial use. We are well aware of this, that the industrial potential, the potential for industrial use. When we bought our houses, this was part of the plan, we knew that was zoned for, and so we are fine with that. Another thing that comes up is that, you know, we're saying that we don't want this land to be developed, we just want to leave it the way it is. We're not saying that. We understand, we do want this land to be developed, but under its current zoning or maybe even looking at low-density. And then, you know, bottom line is, you know, we're looking at ways, we just want to balance our neighborhood with low-density or industrial, commercial, especially now that we had the unplanned develop of Mill Village Apartments. We just don't want a whole nother apartment complex coming in, and that's not balancing out our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, City Council, my name's Bill Irwin, I live at 227 Cattail Court. And I just want to say, we're just a bunch of homeowners, we're not professional speakers, we're just doing our best up here. So we're trying to just present you with different views and not repeat each other's sayings. What I'm going to speak about is about the bald eagle's nest. And now, am I a bald eagle expert? By no means am I. But I have done a lot of research here in the last week or two, I will say that. Trying not to bore you. But anyway, according to the National Bald Eagle Management Guidelines, it's illegal to disturb eagles' nesting areas, and we know we have one in that very area, at least one and perhaps as many as five. Now, we know that the nesting times are approximately November through February, egg laying between January and April, rearing between March and May, and fledglings around May through June. The things that disturb eagles the most are noise, and believe me, construction's going to add a lot of noise, activities near their nesting sites, this will be major activities. This is mandated by the National Bald Eagle Guidelines to be no closer than 660 feet, is also recommended by the Colorado State Parks and Wildlife to have a buffer area of a half a mile around after bald eagles' nests. This development falls within that area. Things that disturb nesting eagles are areas that are under development that are larger than a half an acre, that's, this falls under that, near their nesting site. Higher the building, the more disturbing it is. If it's going to be up to three flights, it's going to be that much more disturbing. Destruction of food sources, and in this case, the prairie dog habitat, and foraging areas being reduced also cause a lower chance of survival, especially for young fledgling eagles. While the current construction of the high-density dwellings going on south of Ken Pratt Boulevard, these eagles are farther away from that development, and in all honesty, they should not be affected by this, other than losing some foraging and some prairie dogs. The Copper Mill apartment complex, though, will truly impact this eagle nesting site. And how we mitigate that? I mean, we've already given up the trail along the river, and granted, it was washed out by the big flood, but that was closed down to us for as long as I've lived there, and I've lived there now seven years. So we've already made an accommodation to them. I fail to see why we're not making accommodation with this development. Again, I thank you for your time. Thank you.
That's it, with this we conclude. We would just like to kind of mention that a no vote on Copper Mill does not mean that you're against affordable housing. The city has a lot of goals that need to be balanced. We believe this application has numerous detrimental effects, and we would really hope that you would support responsible land use and planning and vote against this development. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we have a bunch of individuals, there's Brandon Hunt, followed by Sarah Hunt.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council Members. My name is Brandon Hunt, I live at 228 Cattail Court. I'm actually reading a letter from our neighbors, Lee and Ronald Huffstetter, live at 224 Cattail Court, and they were out of town, couldn't be here for the meeting. To Longmont City Council and Planning Commission, we respectfully request you turn down this zoning change, application for commercial to high-density apartments for the Mill Village subdivision. Our reasons are, the area zoning was originally identified and created as part of the Longmont Long-Term Plan, was a proper mix and balance for our neighborhood, a mix of light industrial, commercial, and residential. Developer and homeowners consider Longmont Long-Term Plan as the vision the city has for an area. Homeowners make investments in the neighborhood and city based on the best information available, the city vision for their neighborhood, the Long-Term Plan. To wholesale change the city visions and plans for no solid reason other than taxes and fees, break the trust of the city and neighborhood citizens. Neighborhood of homes paying taxes over 14 years did not purchase with the intent that homes would be completely surrounded by apartments, both high and medium-density. We purchased with the intent that we would live in a multi-use neighborhood. A neighborhood zoning change approval from commercial to medium-density apartments was made for the north side of the neighborhood. Not one positive comment from neighborhood citizens during the review and meeting process. A number of qualifiers for both medium-density and high-density city of Longmont has detailed where I met, the bus stops, parks, et cetera, they were already detailed. The zoning change was approved despite the above factors. While change is welcome and inevitable, a long-term plan was put in place for a guide, and to totally ignore the guide and original plan changes the implicit promise and intent for city direction and betrays the trust of your citizens. There's property nearby already identified as high-density. Why change our neighborhood partial to high-density, which completely changes our neighborhood and the original plans? Commercial properties not place the same 24-hour load on the neighborhood as high-density apartments. Rental units and their renters do not have any vested interest in their living spaces, landscape, et cetera. To surround a group of homes with high-density apartments is not good planning and add hundreds of people, pets, traffic that were not part of the long-term plan for the neighborhood. Would you want this for your neighborhood? Please disapprove the zoning change from commercial to high-density and allow our neighborhood to maintain a proper balance of apartments, condos, and single-family homes. Thank you.
Okay, Brandon, Sarah Hunt.
Members of City Council, thank you for your time this evening. I'm Sarah Hunt, we live at 228 Cattail Court, and I am speaking on our actual behalf. We purchased and had our home built to our specifications at the beginning of the development under the plan that the area would indeed be light industrial. I know no one wants to make a decision to the detriment of anyone, and with that said, I just ask that you not do anything to our neighborhood you wouldn't do to your own. This area clearly does not suit the proposed high-density use and is not desired by us collectively as homeowners. Please do not rezon the proposed area for moderate-income projects such as this or high-density residential of any capacity. Thank you.
And Sarah Chumachango? All right. How do you pronounce that again?
Sorry, you fail.
I figured.
I'm a rookie here, I don't know how that works. Chumchayo, my name is Sarah Chumchayo. Good evening, everyone. I live at 223 Cattail Court, and my family and I have only lived in the neighborhood for two and a half years, but already we're kind of considering if we want to stay there long-term or not because of all the new developments that have come about, because of the new, several new apartments that are starting. And to be honest, I don't think that's something that the city wants, is for their members, their residents to reconsider where they're living or moving to another town or something, to get the same property values that we have now. We're definitely afraid of losing our value, we're kind of stuck in a bind of, if we move now, nobody wants to move in because there's apartments, but if we move later, nobody wants to move in because there's apartments. But that's kind of where our, my family and I, our perspective is coming from, just to echo what everyone else said too. With school traffic, I'm sure there's been studies done, but I work in the schools and I don't see where we can have that many grand influx of students and have room for that. Maybe there is, and there might be a plan for that, but from a personal perspective, it seems difficult to plan for that. Like has been mentioned, we already have apartments going into the neighborhood already. So it would seem feasible and reasonable to me personally and to many of our neighbors to maybe rezon it for single-family homes, for town homes, maybe for retail or restaurants, rather than large, large industrial, even large industrial or large high-density apartments. So just consider our statements in your decision-making. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council, Mr. Mayor. My name is Noreen Kennedy. I am the broker of Kennedy Real Estate, I'm the listing agent for this property and have been since 1993. It's a career listing for me. Hopefully I won't, I'll be around to see it out. When this property was originally annexed, there was an agreement put in place that the owners would not develop until the Ken Pratt bypass was complete. That kept the property in limbo for several years. And if you will all reference to this handout that I gave to you all, this was, as you see by this concept plan, I've given you, all the owners are represented except for Thomas and Loftquist to the west, and that would be the west of 119, where the Sugar Mill Building is itself, and the big gray building, that's Randy Loftquist. Sugar Mill Partnership and Steve and Margaret Strong are the owners you see on the plan. And we worked very closely with the city for the designing of the Gateway to Longmont project, knowing that this concept will represent Longmont in a better view. General industrial was not a good fit for the 19 acres, so in around 2004, the owners started the multifamily zoning change. They met with the departments and with the neighbors and did not receive any objections. The owners then backed off of pursuing the zoning change for financial reasons. So the interest came in for general industrial uses, and here are some of that I pulled from my past notes. And these all fall under a general industrial zoning when you go to your land use codes. Biofuel companies, that came from the economic development, landscaping companies, outside storage facility, strip club, adult bookstore, those are all under general industrial, a brewery, soccer fields, construction company, McDonald's companies for a trash recycling area, Well County Correctional Transfer Facility, and a church. And those are just to name a few. I've had this for many years, and I could not go through all of what I've seen come across our plate. The owners chose not to go with any of these businesses, knowing that the highest and best use for the property's location would be the multifamily. Now, Mill Village was intended to be light industrial originally, we've talked about that, but once Mr. Pomainville started an enclave of residential and recently multifamily, it has set a precedence for residential use rather than general industrial on the 19 acres. And I really feel for these neighbors, he made promises he could not keep when he started that project, and the saying that, oh, this will be this around you, this will be that. The thing that happens with cities as they grow, they have to grow and they have to change with the times, and that's where Longmont's changing right now. I feel for those neighbors, unfortunately, they got made promises that weren't realistic. The concerns of the current neighborhood is the impact Copper Mill will have on it. Would these neighbors rather see trash trucks and waste being stored next door, or heavy equipment noise, or the weekend's full soccer?
Sorry, your three minutes is up, that's all you get.
You only get three minutes?
Yes.
You all got much more than I did.
Well, they were doing a group as a 15-minute block, so.
Let me just say one thing, that inland group is going to be a very hands-on company here, an owner, and that will be friendly, they care about their folks, they're going to listen to you, they're going to make everything very conducive to the neighborhood.
Thank you.
And thank you for your time.
Thank you, my name is Kayla Gilmore, and I live at 232 Sugar Bin Court in Mill Village. We purchased our house in August of last year, but as Mr. Wayne said, the first offer on our house did not go through because the first buyer learned of the Mill Village Apartments going in right on our street. Therefore, the seller of our house had to take a lesser offer because of the apartments. So apartments do greatly affect the property values. After some research and learning that the Mill Village Apartments would be luxury apartments, we decided to take the risk and purchase the house, although we are still concerned about traffic, especially for our kids and property values. If we had known about the Copper Mill Apartments, we would have never have bought our house in Mill Village just last August, especially knowing they are low-income. As you know, there's some light industrial business beside the Mill Village Apartments already right now, and if the question is, would I prefer this light industrial business zoning over low-income, high-density apartments, then yes, absolutely, I would prefer businesses there. Also, I'd like to say thank you to the council members for recognizing that, yes, we have invested our entire life savings in retirement in our house. In my family's particular case, we took a large chunk of our retirement savings out to buy our house, and my husband is disabled. A decrease in our property value could eventually force us into bankruptcy. The applicant says this is a moderate-income housing, not low, however, I've heard that Section 8 vouchers will be approved there, and I would like them to address that. The applicant also says Longmont needs more rental housing, and yes, that is likely true, especially due to the floods, but you've already had to rezon our development in our village to put apartments in, and I just ask that you do not do that to us again. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael, and I can't read that, it's maybe a P-R-I-C-K-O? Okay. Oh, you're going to pass? Okay. Bill Coon?
I'm going to pass also.
Okay.
Thank you all for giving me a, I'll be at a quick moment to speak. My name is Jeremy Gregory, I reside at 238 Sweet Valley Court in Longmont. I'm a third-generation Longmont native. I finally found here Longmont. It's kind of rhetorical, but to Scott, on the contrary, I do take this personal because it affects my quality of life. I'm really kind of tired of the attitude of business is business, and I think it's pretty easy to take this view when you're disconnected and you don't live in this area. So where do you live? Huh? In Spokane, Washington, not in Longmont, Colorado. Property value decline can drop as much as 46% to 48%. Studies such as the David Suzuki Foundation have proven this conclusively. Right here in this spot, you know, we make it sound like this is the last spot we got to develop. This is crazy, you know? I'm encouraged to talk to all of you, I think, who share a vision that we have a lot of space in Longmont. You know, we got Kmart, we got Walmart, we could, you know, we have these developers that are thinking in the box and we're talking about, you know, a comp plan that's been 10 years old, and we do, we need to think outside the box. And this shoot-first, ask questions later is, it's tiring, and again, coming from a third-generation Longmont native, it's horrible, but we have a vision here. I'm encouraged to see that each and every one of you is here to represent the citizens and not just a small group of developers. Specifically and significantly, this will threaten endangered species also while contributing to exotic species invasion. This is probably what I do for a living. I did a tour of the area with Alabama President Steve Jones the other day, and as you may know, there is a bald eagle nest that lives within 800 meters of this development, which puts it within the recommended buffer area of the nest. This development will encroach on the St. Green Valley, St. Green Greenway, one of the most natural remaining areas in Longmont, and a migration corridor for many creatures, I propose that this area be preserved, actually, quite honestly. Why do we need to be dropping developments everywhere? This does affect the quality of life of the people that are there, and we were hoodwinked, we were promised things that I think can be kept, because there are areas inside of Longmont, and I've seen success stories. I've traveled abroad and around the world, and I've seen places across this country, towns and cities, where we can do things right. We don't need to do this, this is going to be a bedroom community, people are going to come into this development and they go to Firestone or somewhere else. They're not going to give back to Longmont, it's right on the edge. There's so, there are so many studies that I think conflict what these developers would have us believe, which is, to me, just a bunch of window dressing. So, thank you, I implore you to please reject this development, it does affect our quality of life adversely. Thank you.
Hi, and thank you for your time. I'm Megan Gregory, and I live at 238 Sweet Valley Court. I just want to address a couple of things. I do think Longmont does need some affordable living. My mother lives in Longmont, she's a senior citizen, she has to live with a roommate because she can't afford anything in Longmont. I was living in Lafayette, I moved and bought my first home here at Mill Village because it's something I could afford, and I couldn't afford that in Lafayette. However, I would love to live there because I can walk to Main Street, I can shop and walk, whereas where I live now, I can't do that. I work in Boulder, I spend my money in Boulder, I take my daughter, I- I work in Boulder, I spend my money in Boulder, I take my daughter, I have to drive 10 miles one way just to get her to her friends in town. It's not convenient, and as a single mother, that increases my gas, and I probably could not afford the rents that they're asking as a single mother. So it is not affordable housing. And there are other areas within Longmont that you could do multi-use that would be convenient for a single parent or a senior citizen living on an income, such as Walmart or Kmart, or something that is near Main Street. You can get on Highway 66 and go either to 25 or take the bus into Lafayette to Lewisville or to Boulder, where there are jobs. And I continue to look for a job in Longmont that pays a decent living. You can't find it. You have to leave Longmont to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Jeff Medwetz?
Good evening, Council and Mayor. My name is Jeff Medwetz. I live at 309 Harvest Street. I purchased my home in Mill Village in 2002 with that, the full understanding of how the zoning was in our neighborhood. And we take that basically as a promise, an understanding of what will be happening. And first of all, we were here two years ago with the Mill Village Apartments. That land use was changed, so now you're asking, you're being asked to change again. Are you going to be asked again in the near future? So my point would be, let's take the time to do this right, as we've heard from some people. If industrial, light industrial is not preferred or looked at as good, why don't we update and look at the comprehensive plan instead of, as we said earlier, piecemealing this development? Thanks.
Thank you. Nobody else on the list? Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to come and speak on this item? I guess seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at this point.
I do have just a quick question from, do you remember the density of the Mill Village apartments? I thought that was about like 28, and this is like 15, so this is actually lower, slightly lower than that one. Is that correct, or is my memory not?
Mayor Coombs, your memory is pretty good. That density is about 25 units per acre, so that's, I think, about 220, approximately 220 units on approximately nine acres, whereas this proposal's for 252 units on almost 18 acres.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess the random thoughts that I'm having, and I won't make a motion at this point because I expect to hear from my fellow council members, but where I come down on this whole thing is thoughts. One, some things that I hadn't considered before I heard the presentations. One, I agree, this is a gateway area. I think that we need to understand what's going to happen there. Things that I had preconceived coming into tonight that have not changed is the fact that we need a plan for this particular area of our city. I've said it many times throughout the last two years since sitting in this chair, and that is, a lot of times I look around Longmont and go, gosh, what were they thinking? And so the phrase, you know, shoot first and ask questions later, you know, comes to mind. I was in favor of Mill Village, had the same thought process occur, and I voted, you know, that I thought Mill Village was what the city needed. I thought that it wouldn't impact negatively the area, and so I voted, you know, that way. Right now, I couldn't answer, and I don't think anyone in this room could tell us what we need as a city, other than we've got a vacancy rate of 2.6%. We need high-density residential. However, as much as I think that this is the right project, I would question if this is the right location, meaning that, I mean, there's no doubt about it. We need, we look at the Affordable Housing Task Force, they came back and basically said the solution is build more high-density residential areas, because you're going to have people, everybody moves up. You build one set of units, people are going to, you know, move up the tier and open up that space for people coming up. So it's a natural solution for affordable housing. I just don't know if it's fair to say, look, we're going to stick, you know, 500, 600 units in your neighborhood, and thanks a lot for your service, but we appreciate what you're doing for the city. You know, I kind of like right now how the city, if you drive around, you've got apartment buildings all over the town, and they're spaced evenly, and I think that's a good way to think about things. So I guess, I guess when the time comes, and I guess I'm also thinking about, you know, I guess I'm thinking about, and I haven't asked this question, but I guess I'm kind of assuming that I'm hopeful that, you know, that good business sense came into play here, and they basically, you know, the developer basically said, you know what, I'm not going to purchase, I want an option, we're going to see what the city council says. It doesn't mean that, you know, you couldn't develop there in the future, but my opinion is I don't want to see development there until we look at what needs to be done there. What are our needs? And I'm very hesitant to change the zoning, unlike the Mill Village. That was a tweak. This would literally be changing the zoning. And I just, I guess I want to remind all our developers, don't be promising stuff that you don't have the authority to guarantee, meaning, and I guess I would also tell the residents in the future, don't be buying stuff when somebody who doesn't have the authority to make the promise. Don't believe anybody, you know? So, but that's where I'm going to come down on it, where I guess I'm not going to, at this time, support the development or the, I guess, the changes that we're faced tonight. So that's what I'm thinking.
Well, I think everybody agrees that the comp plan is just, was originally a guiding document, and it's definitely, in that area, it's got to be somewhat broken, because, you know, this statement here, this is that 90% of the I/ED land on the east side neighborhood is vacant, so there's a large vacancy of that type of land, which maybe means that maybe we have too much of that land in our comp plan right now, and that needs to be reconsidered perhaps. Yeah, I understand both sides of the argument. This is really a tough decision, because I, you know, I thought the applicant made a really good presentation and looked like a good project, and it does have a lot of benefits, and, you know, I know now as a local business owner, a lot of my employees have to live out of town and commute to work because there's no place for them to live, and that's not a good thing either, so. But, you know, I agree with Mayor Pro Tem Brian Bagley that, yeah, it's, it's, maybe if there was another location for this, that would be great, but I don't know. I'm really conflicted with this decision that we have to make tonight. So I'm going to let someone other council members speak. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'm conflicted as well. And I am, I am the biggest pro-developer on this council, and yet I don't feel good about this. And there are a couple of reasons why, but I do have a couple of questions. Are there other areas in the city of this size that are zoned for high-density residential?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Finley, there are other areas in the city that are designated high-density residential and that potentially have R3 zoning. You know, I don't know exactly what the applicant's criteria are in terms of their site selection, so I can't really speak to are there adequate parcels?
For them.
For them.
Of the same size?
You know, that I can't speak to. I would say, without really looking more closely, there's probably not that many parcels of this size. You know, when I look at our land supply data, residential land uses comprise about 45% of the Longmont planning area. Of that, 64% are low-density, 18% are medium-density, and 7% are high-density. So there's a small percentage to start in the planning area that are, that are high-density. And of that 7%, roughly 24% is vacant. That includes any parcel that has that designation, so that could be a single lot, you know, for a fourplex or something. But I don't have the breakdown of, you know, specific parcels by size. Again, my guess would be that there's not a large number of parcels that are 18 acres in size that are zoned and have a land use designation that are annexed, that are, you know, that would be my guess. The applicant may be able to address that. I'm guessing they probably looked around in the city, so they may have an additional answer to that question.
I can answer it this way. If you have a vacancy rate of what the recent study shows of less than 1%, if there were vacant land on the market zoned high-density residential, you'd have a line of developers coming in to do this. And we certainly are not foolish enough to pick a piece of land that we have to spend six-plus months on and spend real dollars and real time to get here before you with the opportunity to maybe develop it. It's not there. And so what you have before you is whether it's this property or not, there's going to have to be rezoning. And to think that you're not going to have this at the next rezoning might be not being truthful with yourself, because...
That really wasn't my question, but thank you for answering. The other question that I had is how many units per acre for moderate density? What's the criteria?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Finley, are you referring to medium-density residential? So that would be between 6 and 12 units per acre?
Six and 12, and these guys are proposing 15 units per acre.
Yeah, 14.2.
14.2, okay.
It's a little bit over that threshold of medium-density on the low end, but still in that high-density range.
Okay, let me see if I have all my questions answered. Let me tell you what I'm thinking. We need high-density residential. There's no doubt that we need it. I was all for the Mill Village apartments, because along Third Avenue there, no one would buy a house along 119. I mean, so that apartments seemed like a great buffer there. In this area here, not so much, maybe. I have a little trouble with that, mostly because of the people who live there now, they've had their zoning tweaked, as they said, already, and now we're going to do it again. What we need is a plan of where we need to put this high-density residential, and I don't think we have that plan. And until we do, I'm not comfortable putting it in this neighborhood, I guess. That's kind of where I'm falling on this one. Those are just my thoughts.
Councilmember Moore? Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So I want to get back to this question of affordable housing. It's been brought up, it's actually been my impression all along, that's my fault if I misinterpreted that, but it's, I heard tonight now, it's market-rate housing. And when you refer to the Workforce Housing Task Force, those 200 units needed per year were based on less than 50% AMI, which is, this project will not fulfill that requirement. So beyond, I just want to understand that this is not going to be low-income, or low, not low-income, affordable housing. Is that true? Is that correct?
Yeah, happy to clarify. It's technically, the income restriction would be at 60% of our median income for Boulder County. Our proposed rents are affordable at about the 48% to 50% or income level. So essentially, it's targeting folks at the 50% income level, that's what the rents equate to, but our actual income limit is at the 60. So still, the financing mechanism hasn't changed, the folks that we would rent to has not changed. I think perhaps, not so much the way we presented it, but confusion about the varying degrees and slices of the target population. It's 60% income limit, rents at the 48% to 50% limit.
And how old is the data you're using?
Meaning?
How far back did that data get collected for that analysis of setting the 60% AMI?
The 60% AMI is the new 2014 HUD median incomes, so it's quite new. It's published in January.
I just wanted to point to a recent Denver Boulder study that was setting the average rents in the area at $1,200 a month. So I'm thinking that this is, these rents may end up, 60% AMI may actually go up in the next year or two, in order to keep pace with the regional market. Just a comment. So I guess we're looking at breaking ground on this project if it's approved, when?
The earliest guess would be fall of this year.
One other point I'd like to make with the Workforce Housing Task Force is that the housing, the desired outcome of that would be to have this, have the housing distributed throughout Longmont rather than have high concentrations in any one location. Just as another comment on that. And there again, I am conflicted about Longmont not having its job, done its job on its comprehensive plan for the last 10 years is our bad, but I don't feel like I'm satisfied with this particular project, so, thank you.
I have just a quick question about the eagle problem. It doesn't matter whether you're going to build heavy industrial, everybody has to deal with that problem, and the way you deal with that is either you build during a certain time period, or you have someone that's going to actually watch the eagle and make sure you're not disturbing it, and then report back. So I mean, is that, is that how, everybody has to deal with that problem, so it doesn't really matter what the zoning is, it's not...
Mayor Coombs, you're correct, and if you look in your packet, we do have the letter from Parks and Wildlife. Basically, they have a threshold, they would recommend construction occur outside of certain periods. If that can't happen, they recommend, similar to, I think, what Walmart did, is hire, basically, a biologist that stays on-site to monitor things. So again, we, you are correct that regardless of the type of development, be it high-density housing or some type of general industrial user, they would be needing to go through the same process. So certainly, if a project goes through, you know, if this project were approved and went on to a site planning phase, much more detail would need to be paid to, you know, notes on that plan and working with Parks and Wildlife on what that solution would be. And that would be the same for if someone came in and developed an industrial use, they would be going through a site plan, and the same process would be, or similar process would be followed at that point.
Councilmember Christiansen?
Okay, since we're all bearing our thoughts, my, I thought that the Inland Group did a very fine presentation and answered a lot of questions, and also brought up a lot of benefits, made clear some of the economic benefits. I think most of us are very conflicted about this, because of course we do need more housing. We also need more jobs. So I, and I also really think it's a shame that the property owner has to wait for this dithering around with the city on trying to sell his land. I think it's a shame that the broker has to wait for the dithering around about this, and that the Inland Group has to wait for this sort of stuff, too. I think this is a good project. I just wish it were somewhere else. I can't support it here. I just can't. But I hate to see, I would hate to see this not be in the city of Longmont somewhere, because I think it's very thoughtfully worked out, and I don't think it's, you know, it's not slamming people in and block-style stuff. It's got plenty of open land, and I think it's a very attractive plan, but I can't support it where it is.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you. Erin, when we spoke earlier this afternoon, I asked you about what density looks like in the city, and I don't know if you were able to rustle up some looks of density of projects that all of us might frequently drive past and know. For example, the Legacy Apartments... the Legacy Apartments at the corner of, is it Dry Creek and, not Dry Creek, can't remember the name of it, on Nelson Road behind the J.C. Pettys and King Supers. Do you have any, I think you mentioned 24 acres, and do you know what the density on the Legacy Apartments is?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Levison, after we spoke late this afternoon, I was able to pull some of those numbers. To have a couple of examples, we talked about the Mill Village Apartments that were recently approved, and again, that's about 25 units per acre. Roosevelt Park, just to give you a really high end of the spectrum, is about 67 units per acre. The Legacy Project you mentioned is about 17.9 units per acre, so a little bit higher than this project. But Yew Creek, which is at 17th and Pace, is about 16.9 units per acre. And Fox Ridge over on Airport Road is about 16.5. So those three, just to give council an idea, are, you know, a little bit higher than I think what the applicant's proposing, but probably, you know, a little bit more in the range versus like the Roosevelt Park or even the Mill Village Apartments that we're seeing constructed now. So those three are in similar density range.
And Roosevelt Park is really the project that's the, our first urban, big-city urban-scale density, being three, a full three stories of, it's a different product.
Much different project type, but just to give, sometimes it's difficult to, you know, visualize what density is. So just to give people an idea of what some of those ranges look like.
And I know that Prospect Newtown had been prominently featured in a book published by Lincoln Land Policy Institute around what density looks like and how density can, depending on how things are massed and the layout, can feel less dense than it is. And I don't know, in this case, you know, I haven't really seen, have a good perception of aerial view and other aspects to determine that. But I think that, I think the amount of massing that goes on, I know that when there was another phase of Grandview Meadows, you know, a neighborhood that was not even as close and adjacent to what this project was came forward also with some issues concerning setbacks with Greenway and other issues and that we had to carefully consider there, too. I think that over and over again in the last six to, six months to a year, year and a half, we've seen these conflicts arise again and again. And I think we need to do maybe something different when we're doing our community planning and the system of neighborhood meetings maybe not being relevant in the time point with, in the development process. I have a difficulty with the project. Again, I think that the Mill Village Apartments, when that change was made, that was going to be a one-off, it seemed. And to use that one-off project that was a tweak, then to establish now that this is the trend, because we approved something once, now the trend for this neighborhood is approve everything that's higher density than the first-in-line residential. And, you know, that's not a logical argument in any case. I also really think that for neighborhood cohesion, as a former neighborhood leader, it is really difficult to integrate large blocks of apartments and renters when you're talking about a general geographic neighborhood. And I know the neighborhood group is primarily the HOA. However, having Mill Village, they're going to have to find a way to do, you know, neighborhood parties and accommodate the new residents and the rentals. And it's increasingly difficult due to the nature of the mentality when you rent, you don't have as many roots sometimes, that you feel that you're really part of the neighborhood. And I think that having a piling on of a second multifamily, almost self-contained in a way, would further disengage the homeowners from the renters. And I think that that would be to the detriment of the community. And it would, I mean, there's really no leadership within a rental community sometimes, of people that are going to be reaching out to people in the other types of housing. So that's, that's kind of a soft part of the review criteria, in a way. And the transportation, for me, is also a huge issue. And so I can't really be supportive of this project either. I think it's just the wrong place. And I'd like to, I don't, we have to do something better about the process as well. And that's not a discussion for now. That might be a great discussion when we have some retreat issues.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, Councilmember Finley, I'll disagree with you. There's no bigger pro-developer person than me. But I'm working on it. Lost my train of thought. Exactly. Funny-looking, too. I can punch holes in everyone's argument, the six of these guys, and everyone that presented, too. Yes, we are in desperate need of rental housing. Yes, you're an out-of-state developer. Boo. Yes, quality of life is important, but we shouldn't boo-hoo people that come in and try to make quality of life better. I voted for Mill Village. I'm proud of that vote because I thought it was important. I'm, I've heard arguments for and against, you know, residents are upset. I'm also kind of curious why people are living there. You can't get to schools, there's no parks, there's nothing there. Why do you live there? There's no public transportation, and I know why. RTD, my favorite hate subject. Scott, you can quote me again. RTD, there is no, they need the density for ridership. Hear it all the time. Every RTD meeting that I go to, whether it's fast tracks, whether it's regional transportation, you name it, Longmont doesn't have the density. That's why you're getting cut on your regional busing, and that's why you're not basically getting, you're going to get hosed on the rail, 20, who knows when. So in a sense, you build it, it'll come. Hate to say that. And I understand, you're shaking your head, no, I understand. But that's what I'm being told by RTD. I disagree as well. Not you, Erin. I understand, but that's what I'm being told. And what members of council have said is that, you know, they've found conveniently ways to say no, and, you know, I don't agree with this. And, you know, everyone has their opinions. Some preconceived and some already set in stone. It is what it is. We need this. Is it the right place? I'm not sure. Come in here, you know, you leave, you try, do your best to represent everybody. Again, like I said, people hate you, one way or another, people like you. Sometimes you piss off the people that like you, and you, sometimes the people that hate you still hate you even though you vote the way they like you, the way you want them to. That's how it is. But see, I mean, part of this whole process, you know, whether it's affordable, it's workforce, you know, I've heard about this project, you know, on January 21st. It's low-income. It's not what I heard. It's not what I heard at the very beginning. I got a couple of phone calls from people. It's low, you know, I heard ghetto today. I heard slum. I heard this about Mill Village Apartments. I heard a lot about it nimbly, not in my backyard, which is unfortunate. During that public hearing, I, you know, and I listen to everybody intently. I don't get up, I take a few notes about what everybody's saying. You have three minutes, in some cases you get 15, you know, group presentation. I give everybody their time. Because that's what we get elected to do. Everyone, they're three minutes. But in that one, I heard, we don't want these people living here because we're not, but I didn't hear that here, but I heard adages of it, some of it, which concerned me. Affordable housing, middle-class prospect is what we were promised. I heard that. That concerns me. We're going to get Section 8. You know, every project that comes in, in housing, and before we had the, when we had the affordable housing, inclusionary zoning, you had to have that. You know, and it's spread out, Councilmember Moore, it's spread out throughout the entire city. We're not looking to have a ghetto in one section. I remember Councilmember Brown was worried about that. That's why we had inclusionary zoning. But it got to a point where it got so wrapped up that people couldn't get out of those leases. So we undid that. I don't know how a vote's going to happen. I'm not, I haven't made up a decision yet. But apparently some members of council, before they got in the room, had already made up their mind. But you've got to make the best decision you can, for the residents, for people to come in. And just to let residents know, yes, the comp plan hasn't been updated in 10 years. Because what happens is when things come in, we get a request. That's how things happen. We got a request. It's not that we can go in here, right here, in this section of the map, we need to change this to this. I know you guys were promised something, and I'm sorry you were promised something. Things do change. But when a request comes in, we have to act on it. We just have to act. Whether it's a yes or no tonight, I'm not sure.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess I have one more insight, and then I'm actually going to make a motion. And that was, I've talked with various developers the last couple of months, and some of them were kind of sore because we actually, you know, cooperated quite extensively with Cotton Burden as he put in the high-density residential apartment buildings there on Main Street. And they did it quite well. They not only came in, I mean, I never talked to Cotton Burden, I never talked to anybody about that project. The first time I even heard about that project, they basically came in with the neighbors and had convinced the neighbors, the LDDA, to give them money to do their project. They wanted it so badly next to them. And so there are ways where we can actually, as a city, cooperate with developers to actually, you know, where we want it so bad, we'll pay you to do it. And I would just encourage just all developers, some of which are in the audience tonight, to look for those opportunities, you know. So with that, I'm looking at the options. And I'm actually going to make a motion that, after reviewing the proposed land use amendment and rezoning, I actually move that we do not approve the ordinances, both of them.
Second that.
Yeah. Yes, one at a time.
I would move that we do not approve ordinance 2014-04.
Okay, it's been moved in seconds. Councilmember Levison?
One thing I wanted to mention to council also is that occasionally, and I know in one instance this is true, when you seem to have a bird in the hand, you know, sometimes there's a second one, you know, there's a second one out there in a bush somewhere. And I'll remind people that may not remember, maybe five, six years ago, there was a proposal along the midtown stretch of Main Street for a car wash, a second car wash within two lots of a car wash already there, an open, you know, car wash with bays. And staff in the planning department absolutely recommended, you know, this is the only thing we've seen at this former car dealership location. And this is great. And yet, there was another planner presenting that said, well, you know, we've done, we've done some studies and we know there could be better uses here. And just because you have one being proposed doesn't mean that there couldn't be something else better to come along. And that evening, the Planning and Zoning Commission said, no, we don't really feel we want a second car wash, two doors down from another car wash on Main Street, auto-dependent business. And in the end, what happened is that the Pacific Auction House sold a property on Boston Avenue, relocated there, and we've got a better and higher land use going on, generating sales tax and other activity where we needed it on Main Street. So the lesson for me in that story is sometimes when you say no, some other door will open, and you can get something different and better. And it maybe draws some attention to opportunities someone may have overlooked. So, thank you.
Well, we've got a motion. It's been second. I just want to add a couple of comments at this point. It's, it's been a long night. But, you know, this is a project, yes, yes. It's, you know, this is a project that's been approved by staff, recommended by staff, recommended by planning and zoning. It's a badly needed project. The fact that, to me, the traffic studies kind of support, because you can't compare vacant land to what the traffic's going to do. And that's what I think a lot of people are doing at this point. You know, the eagle nesting problem, that's going to be solved no matter what we build there at this point. So it's, and, you know, I was actually one that voted yes in Mill Village, but I kind of like this project. And I kind of, you know, I wish it would be in a different location. But I just know from, there's people in this town that need places to live that can't live in our town, that work in our town, unfortunately. But, you know, that's just my thoughts on it. And I do feel for the Mill Village. I mean, I've met with these people a number of times during the first thing, and I appreciate, you know, their investments and that point of view. And I also am conflicted that, you know, when people buy a piece of property and they expect to have certain zoning around them, and that changes the game, it makes it difficult to, for anybody to ever have a whole lot of confidence. But, you know, in some cases, I think that, you know, they could end up with, you know, much worse. You know, they could have a big storage place, they could have, you know, dry cleaning, they could have all kinds of things there, is the way it's sort now. So, I mean, but anyway, we've got a motion. It's been second, and I guess it's time to vote. Yes. Yeah, we're voting on the, we're voting not...
The motion is not to approve the ordinance. So yes means no.
Yeah. Okay, that passes 5 to 2 with Councilmember Santos and Mayor Coombs descending. And that was a very difficult, difficult vote. Councilmember Bagley?
We're not done yet. And I also move that we do not approve ordinance 2014-05.
Second.
Okay. And let's vote. All right, and that passes 5 to 2 with Councilmember Santos and Mayor Coombs descending. Yeah, let's take a 10-minute break.
Nine A, which would be a loan from the Fleet Fund to the Urban Renewal Authority. And then the final piece of the puzzle there would be item 11A1A, which is a LURA item, which would make, enact a budget and make the additional appropriation so that we would be able to wire the money tomorrow. And just so you know, the timing was chosen so that Newmark Merrill had to fund its obligations of $5 million yesterday. We have received confirmation from the escrow agent that it has received the $5 million, so all systems are go. I was on a telephone conference today with the attorneys from Newmark Merrill, as well as Dillard's, working out the final details for the closing, the transfer of possession of the property, and the disbursement of funds from the court registry. That is all set to occur by the end of this week. And so with that, I would entertain any questions or council can move forward with those actions.
Is there any questions from the council? All right, I'm going to open this up for a public hearing on ordinance 2014-06. Does anybody from public would like to speak at this time? I guess seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. So, does someone want to make a motion? Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'd like to move ordinance 2014-06.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero.
Okay, Mayor Coombs, your next item is the consent agenda. First nine A is Resolution 2014-16 authorizing a loan from the fund balance in the city's fleet fund to the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority and providing for repayment of the loan from the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority. Item nine B is Resolution R2014-17 approving the supplemental environmental projects agreement between the city and the Colorado Department of Public Health and the environment for debris removal and cleanup of the Royal Mobile Home Park. Item nine C is Resolution 2014-18 approving the agreement between the city and the Prairie Mountain Publishing Company, LLP, for an archiving agreement. Item nine D is Resolution 2014-19 approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the Colorado Department of Transportation for grant funding high visibility impaired driving enforcement. Item nine E is authorized use of fund balance for the purpose of the public safety rifle purchase plan. Item nine F is suspend council rule of procedure 25 and designate the March 18th city council meeting as a regular session. Item nine G is appoint members to the Longmont Youth Council for the school year 2014 through 2015. Mayor Coombs' staff does not need to pull any items.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm with the consent agenda.
Councilmember Bagley?
I just, I don't want to pull it, but I just want to draw attention to the fact that my daughter Danielle has been serving on youth council. I'm not going to recuse myself for the simple reason that it's not a competitive position. I would recuse myself if there was a spot that she and another person were competing for. And so, I know, because you're awesome. So, because there would not, basically, we're just approving the list or not. I've served it for, I've served as a, as a member of that board, and unless somebody wants me to recuse myself, I'm not going to. So, I can at least go home and tell her I support her, and she needs to get her butt to the meetings and not make me look bad. So, I will second, I will second Councilman Santos's motion.
Okay. Councilmember Christensen?
I just want to say that I think those, a lot of those members of the youth council are here earlier, but now that we've gone on for so long, they're not here. So, it's a shame that they can't see us approve them, but, okay, anyway.
Councilmember Levison?
Undoubtedly, some Fred will upload it to YouTube and they'll find out tomorrow. The other thing is, I would like, since we did miss the opportunity to have a formal introduction, is that we do carve out some time this year to meet with them, not just to, you know, congratulate them on, you know, beating us on the Halloween for the Hungry again, but really to meet with them and listen to what they're working on. And Councilmember Moore has been really helping them, and I'm trying to support Councilmember Moore with this project they're doing with the neighborhood aspect of it. So, I think it would really, if it's possible, staff could find a way to carve out some time for us. I don't know if it could be possible in a pre-session even, if it would, if it would be good to do that. But I'd like to be able to connect with names, and we haven't met with them in years, just one-on-one.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, okay. But all of this would be nice to have that opportunity. Thank you.
All right, let's vote. Okay, the entire consent agenda has passed seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, your first item and only item under general business. First, you'll need to recess and then I can read it into the record.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we recess as the Longmont City Council and convene as the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority.
I'll second that. Let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero. So now we're the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority.
And your item is Resolution LURA 2014-04, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority enacting a budget and making an appropriation for the expenses and liabilities of the authority for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2014.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. I move Resolution RL, oh, excuse me, R-L-U-R-A 2014-04.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Let's vote.
Yeah, me too.
That passes seven to zero. Okay, now it's time for final call. Oh, excuse me, Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that we adjourn as the Longmont Urban Renewal, Renewal Authority and reconvene as the Longmont City Council.
I'll second that. Let's vote. That passes seven to zero. All right, now it's time for final call. Public invited to be heard. Does anybody from the honest like to speak at this time? Seeing no one, I'll close. Final call, public invited to be heard. Now it's time for mayor and council comments. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm really glad that we're canceling next week's meeting to attend, and I hope, hopefully, we all will attend at least one of those neighborhood meetings. It's important. In fact, I just talked to a resident today that's in the valley, and she was really glad to hear that we're having those meetings. So, look forward to seeing what, and also directing those folks that either email me or call me on the phone to the last few minutes of our last council meeting to the city manager's remarks where Dale is actually giving his presentation. So, that's actually going over very well. So, that's all I have to say. Unless you have something, Harold?
I believe Rigo's actually posted that snippet to the flow page as well, so they can go to the flow page.
Great, thank you.
Well, I'd like to bring something up. You know, I met with Ava, she spoke, public invited, her first person to speak, and she's working on her capstone project. She's part of the Silver Creek Leadership Academy, and talking to me about this Mayors for Peace project. And, you know, one of her projects was to get the city, particularly the mayor, to be part of the Mayors for Peace. And, you know, I read through the stuff, and I'm real comfortable with it. I don't think there's anything controversial about us in principle not wanting a nuclear war. It's not an anti-nuclear energy. It's got some other, I think, ideal projects. So, I would like to get support from council to put my name on that list. So, is there, I'd like to make a motion that the council support me?
Second.
All right. Could we vote on that then?
Actually, Mayor, I'd like to make the comment. I've been aware of this program for about five or six years now, and one of the other key aspects of the program is just to send a message in general that your city is not harboring any nuclear weapons. So, the idea is that, you know, to avoid civilian loss of life, that you don't become a target, that they, you're recognized as saying, you know, we don't, we don't think we're a target, we want you to know we're not a target. So, that was the other aspect of the, the philosophy of this that was interesting. And there are, besides Hiroshima, Yagasaki, the second city affected by the nuclear bombs in 1945, is also supportive, began this program in many cities. I think Chicago is a mayor, Mayors for Peace, Boulder, and others in the country. So, good idea.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thanks, Mayor Coombs. I guess, I guess the, I kept my mouth shut when you put your name on the litter before. I didn't have a problem with that, because what happens is, I don't, I mean, as the mayor, we're not a strong mayoral system, meaning that if you put your name on something and you happen to be a mayor, it doesn't speak for the city. Whereas, if we vote on this, you know, it sounds like we're then saying, well, let's, let's take a stand as a city. Whereas, if you want to do it as mayor, I mean, that's your prerogative, you know. So, my concern is that I don't want to get bogged down in, we could, we could be voted, Boulder, I know, they vote a lot on national issues. And I personally, you know, so I guess I personally, I'm going to abstain, because I support you in doing that, but at the same time, I don't think that it's any of my business what you sign, to tell you the truth. Meaning that, so I personally am telling you, I'm not going to vote, but I'm going to tell you, if you want to put your name on it, you go for it. I put my name all the time on stuff, and I mention I'm a council member, so that doesn't mean I'm representing the city. And so, you go nuts, you know, and may we, and may, one of my favorite movies when I was a boy was Amazing Grace and Chuck with Alex English, beautiful movie. And all the children just stopped talking until there was no nuclear weapons in the world. So, it's a lofty goal, and you go for it, and you do that. I just don't think the city should do it, but if you want to do it, you go nuts. It was a, it was a, yeah, but I'm not abstaining. I was going to point, actually.
Go ahead.
I was actually going to say that when we abstain, it's actually a yes vote under Robert's Rules of Order. So, technically, you never abstain. So, we had a six-one vote to leave at eleven the other night. I was going to point that out, but. I left in protest.
Well, how about? As long as the council's not adamantly opposed to me, I would like to, and not do a formal vote. Is that fine? Okay.
I'd rather, I'd rather.
Yeah, I'll withdraw my motion. And so, okay. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, and thank you for not making us vote on that so that we have to vote on every thing that people think we should. I would like to mention a business of the week. I've not been there, but it sounds quite fascinating. Modena Wine Cafe. It's at 600 Longspreek Avenue, Unit H in Longmont. It says extraordinary wine selection, gourmet coffees, and decadent tapas in a relaxing environment. Well, that sounds just perfect, doesn't it? Yeah, I think we should all go check out Modena Wine Cafe. I don't know if they're open yet, but they're on the Chambers website, so I assume they will be soon if they're not already.
Councilmember Levison?
Yeah, I just wanted to do a quick report about, last week on Thursday and Friday, I attended the Colorado Preservation, Inc., which is a nonprofit statewide preservation organization. Their conference that was the statewide preservation conference called Saving Places, spent two days down at the convention center and hopped and skipped my way through a lot of the, as many sessions as I could, and learned quite a few things. And, you know, they, they do have some interesting technology connections. However, they weren't real happy when I asked the open data question about how much of their data sets they're going to put on, because there was a discussion in this technology session about connecting people to place through technology. And the interesting thing is that they had the same idea as one of the hackers in our hackathon to make available the data set so somebody could do some kind of a program that you could find out by going to their website, the history of places by address in your city, how many times they've gotten support from the state grant system, and various other components that they, they can give you. But it was really remarkable that they weren't willing to expose their data set to allow a coder to come in and create an app that the general public could use. So, I thought it was really interesting that our city has enough confidence that we would open our data sets like we did for the hackathon. And the other interesting thing that I did not know that could be of use to our folks up here in Longmont is that there is a preservation trades certificate program that's out of Lamar Community College. It had been hosted previously at Colorado Mountain College. However, it's all online, so even students from Front Range Community College, or anybody who live, you don't have to live in Lamar to take advantage of it. And then they have a working internship through Historic Core, where you go on projects and actually use the skills firsthand that, that you learn about construction and woodworking skills, to do, work on historic preservation projects all around the state and get paid to do it, and college credit. So, I thought that was very interesting, and everything from carpentry to learning how to do mortar and bricklaying in the, the proper way that would fit historic preservation standards. So, a lot of good information.
Anybody else? Okay, city manager, any comments?
No comments, Mayor.
City attorney, any comments?
No comments, Mayor.
All right, this meeting is adjourned.
Pleasure to stand with you on the field of battle this evening.